Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's regular City of Cedar Falls City Council meeting for Monday, February 17th. I will now call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Schultz.
Here.
Latta.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Hallbaker.
Here.
Gantfield.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And if willing and able, could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And tonight also, we did hear today that past Mayor of Cedar Falls, Doug Sharp, did pass away this last weekend. If any of you have been around long enough to remember Doug Sharp, he served, it sounds like, from '80 to '87. So for him, and then also coming home on February 23rd is a one-year anniversary of the loss of one of our fire captains, Brad Sherwood, to a heart attack. So if we could please have a moment of silence for both of them. All right, thank you, everyone. Excuse me, thank you, everyone. So we have a motion for approval in the minutes of the regular City Council meeting, February 3rd.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion seconded, and all those, or excuse me, any discussion? Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thinking that motion carries. Madam Clerk, any agenda revisions?
Item 28 of the resolution calendar has a notice that has been placed in front of council tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now everyone should have that, these paper copies in front of them. All right, we will now move, or excuse me, move to public forum. Our speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics relevant to city business. This is for specifically an item that's not on the agenda, so if you are here for one of the later items, we'll have the public comment for those at that time. So any other public comment tonight for items not on tonight's agenda? Name and address, please.
Dennis Prokler, 2221 Center Street, Cedar Falls. Tonight I'm going to share something I really wish it wasn't true, but from all the evidence, I'm afraid it is. I feel I have to share this because this is my community, it's my home. I was flooded in 2008, and I really hope I can prevent others from having to experience that. In 2008, Cedar Falls experienced the worst flood ever. Since then, we've raised our defenses, we built flood walls, we bought out properties, but we've done little or nothing to prevent future flooding, to minimize or reduce it. Our downtown area, I believe, is set up for a hit harder than ever when a next major flood comes, and it's set up to receive hits from three different directions now. Current FEMA maps already show levels are, or I'm sorry, it got messed up here. The first one of these assaults comes from upstream. This one could be softened by sending part of the water in the main channel over through the Snag Creek Bridge, but unfortunately, you can't do that because water backed up from East Main Street is standing under the bridge, blocking the way. A second assault on the downtown area comes from directly across the river when the water that I discussed a couple weeks, few weeks ago, backed up by the East Main Street pushes across the river into the river channel. This is directly in the path of water coming downstream in the river, and it creates quite a mess when the two forces collide, and you get a lot of turbulent water and rising water levels as the main current has to push its way through that standing water. In the middle of all this mess, we have a third punch coming from below, from downstream. And originally, this was from the East Main Street Bridge and the Railroad Bridge bottlenecks that caused water to back up. But now, with the addition of the Whitewater Park, we have the water levels rising even higher. Last summer, I documented and photographed water levels were two feet higher above the Whitewater Park during a flood than they had been previously. And I compared this to various government official records, and it all showed two feet What will happen when this two feet higher is added to future floods, I don't know, but there's a fourth punch coming towards downtown Cedar Falls that we haven't had before. In 2008, the river came within inches of touching the bottom of the railroad bridge. In Cedar Rapids, when it touched the bottom of the railroad bridge, they experienced a nine-foot spike as the water hit the bridge and had to rise up. When the bridges collapsed, the railroad cars fell in the river, it had to go over it. They had a nine-foot spike. This was from a class-action lawsuit that was ultimately dismissed. It went to the U.S. Supreme Court, but it was dismissed because railroads have immunity. That's some comfort. They, the bridge in Waterloo also caused the same, similar problem, but Waterloo was saved when the bridge was washed out, and the river didn't rise as much as it could have, but they rebuilt it exactly the same way. My concern is that we could experience the same thing that Cedar Rapids did. If we did, I would be standing, by my calculations, in an inch of water on the second floor of the City Hall, newly remodeled as it is. I don't think it'd be quite nine feet, but in reality, but it's a very real threat, people who are even three or four feet higher. I hope the City Council could look at some of my earlier proposals or other proposals that could create benefits for the community and diminish the flooding that attacks our city, rather than doing things that are just defensive or make things worse. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prokler.
Well, by the way, I have an email address if anybody wants any information. I have tons of documentation that I based what I'm seeing on. It's, everything's as factual as I can possibly make it. If anybody wants validation of it, feel free to contact me, I'll make the, I'll make what information I have available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oops, assaulted your phone.
Any other public comment for tonight? Just name and address, please.
Carrie Sherwood, Dyke, and thank you for that moment of silence, and I thought I could keep it together, but now I can't. My husband, I'm Carrie Sherwood, my husband was the firefighter that Mayor was speaking of, passed away 2/23/24, and as I've shared with you guys previously, that cardiovascular events are the number-one reason for duty, on-duty firefighter deaths. So I'm here to speak with you now about safety concerns and really being improved the heart health of firefighters. I've done a lot of research, a lot of phone calls over the past year, and I started to connect some dots regarding my husband's death. So for me to explain, I need to talk about some history for others to understand the connection to my husband's death and the ongoing risks. First, this is not about using the PSO program, this is about how it was implemented and how it continues to be run. As you know, in 2018, 2019, the professional firefighters with years and years of boots-on-ground experience were leaving en masse for very justified reasons. Then, 168 years of experience were locked out in early 2020. I think it's probably five years ago, about now. It was a total of 354 years, boots-on-ground experience, that was gone. I use the term boots-on-ground experience because that was the gap. It was absolutely essential, and we didn't have it. The ones left, it was a huge dangerous gap when the PSO program went from implementing with attrition to implementing all at once. And that was a change that was made five years ago. Remember, the reason for the change in the implementation plan was the perceived conflict at the station was dangerous. Well, come to find out, the lack of boots-on-ground experience statistically proven was dangerous to the firefighters. As far as I, as far as experience, I believe one PSO was a firefighter previously, and another was on a volunteer department, replacing 300 and some years of experience. I live in a volunteer city, they don't get the calls, they don't get the experience. Based on their ages alone and the fact they were police officers, the experience failed miserably to replace the years and years it pushed out the door. I would hope those involved have the details behind the lost-on-boots-on-ground experience and what replaced it, the facts behind what we lost and what was gained. Yes, they had firefighter one training. Leaders certainly can't just accept they were a volunteer, they are trained, they need to ask more questions because the job is already dangerous enough. The fact is, there was an enormous gap in the experience, and there still is. How anyone thought that was safe was beyond me. After losing 354 years of boots-on-ground experience and it not being replaced, my husband's heavy lifting quadrupled. If you don't understand why, then you don't understand the job. And if you ask anybody currently working, they're not going to tell you the truth because they fear for their positions. That's just the reality of it. Did anyone even research the health dangers for firefighters? Did anyone care enough to research any of this? Did anybody know that the heart was at risk? I easily found the statistics after my husband's death. The number-one reason for the PS, and remember, the number-one reason for the PSO program was firefighters are not 100% productive. Well, come to find out, they desperately need some downtime, especially work in a 24-hour shift, they need respite. They don't get respite after any active call, after any active fire call either. That needs to start happening. Even in a normal fire department environment, where a few new ones are hired on and off, statistics prove their hearts are being damaged, and many of them are preventable. The PSO implementation was nothing short of a disaster, and it caused extremely enhanced danger to their hearts. Nobody researched it. Lives were put more at risk. I have absolutely no doubt it contributed to my husband's heart damage, no one will ever convince me otherwise, it was negligent, the statistics undeniably tell us that. There is still a risk for the department, I emailed several reasons and concerns, I always refuse to accept the high-level information and always will dig into it, but due to the five-minute rule that I'm almost up, I will need to come back to share some of those in detail, and I will, but it's definitely time to throw away the made-up guidelines in the garbage and use the ones that the large group of experts wrote, the National Fire Protection Agency, the National Fall of Firefighter Foundation offers a risk assessment for fire departments that includes risks to the firefighters and the community, and I'd hope Cedar Falls is going to take them up on that offer, it's free, and they have numerous other trainings that I believe would be helpful as well. I believe now, every court level in the state of Iowa has ruled that Cedar Falls had no just cause to let those firefighters go. I truly believe my husband would be alive if that had not happened, and if the environment did not push out the others. I didn't make this up, I am not a grieving widow looking to blame someone, the statistics back it all up. It can hap, and I can't let it happen to somebody else, nobody can let this happen to somebody else. And one more question, there was a tribute to Jack Gross at the North Cedar Fire Station, I believe it was a plaque, he was the last-line-of-duty death. I'd like to know where that is, because if it's still in a station that doesn't exist, that's tacky, and if it was taken and thrown away somewhere, that's not cool. So if somebody can tell me where that is so I can go see it, thank you.
Thank you, Sherwood. I'll pull up on a few of those. I know one item, and I just want to make sure of this. I have a great relationship with our team, and I would encourage, I have never heard from our direct line staff those concerns. I know sometimes, I may say that they don't come and talk to me, but I would say, I hope they encourage, if they do feel that way, that they come talk to me, but I've not heard that from any of our staff, so. Any other public comment for this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move to item number two, special order, or excuse me, staff updates. We have a few staff updates. Chase, you want to go first with the snow hauling?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to give a brief update regarding snowfall accumulation over this last week. So we are invoking a snow emergency ordinance in the Coward Hill and downtown areas. This will begin 7:00 PM on Wednesday, February 19th, until 7:00 AM on Thursday, February 20th, for the purpose of snowing in all the parkade areas. The parking enforcement will go into effect two hours before the time of declaration is made, making it enforceable at 9:00 PM on February 19th.
Thank you. A few other quick ones, I did want to give a, excuse me, introduction and shout-out to Isaac Mada. So Isaac is our new UNI liaison, I know we approved his position at the last meeting, so looking forward to having you, Isaac. Would you like to say anything quick or introduce yourself?
Hello.
On spot.
Yep. I'm Isaac Mada, I'm a senior at the University of Northern Iowa, and my contact information is on the Northern Iowa Student Government website.
And so Isaac is essentially liaison with UNI to make sure we've got some student representation on the council with us, so looking forward to having you, Isaac. Also a previous city intern that went through our rotational program, so has some experience with the city. A few other updates, we do have, and Jen, you went through the effort, and I meant to get me the information, and I left it in my office, so I'll let you, if you have it, yep. People know to cover me, so that when I forget stuff. So we will have, with the cold, some warming centers available, Jen, if you want to.
Sure. So just want to encourage community, take precautions, utilize warming stations set up through the city, so during their hours they're open, the library, the Hur Center, and the visitor's center are available for people to take advantage, and then the Cedar Falls Public Safety Training Room, which actually is a 24/7 opportunity too, if people need a place to stay warm.
Yep. So again, encourage people, feel free to use those, again, the Public Safety Building on South Main Street does have 24-hour, open lobby staff there, so feel free to stop in if you need to. Okay, so now we will move to special order of business. Item number two, public hearing on proposed amendments to the Cedar Falls zoning map from A1 Agricultural Zoning District to RP Planned Resident District, approximately 2.68 acres of property located at the south side of West First Street. Do we have a motion to receive and file approval publication?
So moved.
Motion seconded, any discussion? And any from the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Quick, before we jump into this, one thing I did want to clarify, I know I had a few questions from individuals on this regarding staff's role in this process. Staff really does not have an opinion and does not have the authority to have an opinion on whether or not this project should move forward. Essentially, staff will receive a rezoning request from a developer, they look sure, they look at it to make sure it meets all the ordinance zoning requirements, and they are simply there to follow the process, and it's not their job to make a subjective opinion on whether or not this development should move forward. They essentially look at it, review that and make sure it meets all the legal requirements of what can be brought forward, and then it comes to planning and zoning, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with at this point. They do the reviews, they will occasionally give direction back to staff to say, we'd like to see it be adjusted in these ways. That then is where staff will look to say, okay, we'll work with the developer to, say, reduce the density or make a change. It's really not staff's job to make a subjective opinion and push the developer to do anything, and they actually don't have the authority to. So really, they're just there to follow the process. I know some people have thought staff is pushing this process, they are simply following the legal process. It is really to us, as council and PNZ, to make the subjective opinion on whether or not this project should move forward as it is. So just wanted to say, staff is not bought into this, they don't support it, they don't oppose it. Sometimes we will ask staff for a recommendation based on the legal approval of this, does this meet our code and ordinances, but the recommendation is purely based on, does it meet the ordinances as we have written them? So at this point, we will move forward with any written communications on this item, Madam Clerk?
All materials have been placed in the council packet and are in front of council tonight.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And then we have staff comments tonight from Tom Wintrow. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Again, this request is to rezone 2.6 acres on the, to the south of West First Street and approximately 350 feet east of Winding Ridge Estates. You can see, here is the site, it's outlined in yellow. To the east, we have C2 zoning and the S1 for the Thunder Ridge shopping area. To the southeast, there's Thunder Ridge Apartments, zoned R3. Immediately below is an RP district that has a plan in place, and then Winding Ridge is to the west, and then across the street is some R1, and a little further down is some So this plan was originally, the current plan that's in place was approved in 1994. The comprehensive plan was amended at that time to medium-density residential, part of the property had been medium-density. Whoever, the council at that time approved this as medium-density and approved the RP plan. The current development agreement allows up to 15 units per acre. The approved plan was considered medium-density residential at that time because the current comprehensive plan was not adopted, and the land use, closest land use plan map at that time in '87 showed part of this area as residential, medium-density. So the request then, again, you can see the site outline, is to rezone just that 2.68 acres to RP. The current land is vacant, it's not been used as farmland for decades, in fact, it was owned previously by the Fluidines, who had a commercial property out there. It's part of a remnant of A1 that's no longer really suitable, suitable for farming because of the size, there's a 20-acre minimum for agriculture. The comprehensive, the rezoning criteria, there's three criteria. One is that this is compliant with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan shows this area as RP, medium residential. The second one is that it should have access to public services. This property does have access to all the necessary utilities, some may have to be extended, but it is available to the property. And the third is that it should have access to an adequate street network. In this case, Lake Ridge Drive will be built and extended to the south property line. It currently would have access to First Street, which is a state highway, which has obviously state standards, so it would be able to handle the traffic. And there's some questions that we've had about what the RP district standards are, and so I want to kind of clarify them here for you tonight. Number one, no more than 15% of the total area of an RP district may be used for commercial development. And note, this current RP site is one lot, so it's not been subdivided, but up to 15% of that could be used. Lot area requirements in the multifamily area of the planned residence district shall be the same as the R4 residence district, and again, this is our city code. And then finally, all density requirements shall be computed based upon the total area basis using private drives, streets, common open space, park areas, recreation areas, off-street parking areas, as well as the building site. So right now, I'm going to do a quick comparison of what's currently approved and then what they're proposing. So the site is currently approved for 216 units, there are nine buildings which are highlighted in red. It's on 15 acres, and you know, there's some question about the 15 acres, but when it was rezoned and came through, that it's plus or minus 15 acres, there's different, the county's website shows a different number. The density that's currently approved is 14.4 acres, and again, this was approved when it was rezoned to 15 units per acre. So it meets what was required then. There were buffers for the north side, or all sides, that were just 15 feet that were in place. What they're proposing now is a reduction to 186 units, they're proposing six buildings instead of nine. It's on, if this rezoning would be approved, it would be on 17.5 acres, so it would encompass what's outlined in black. That would bring the density down to 10.63 acres, or 63 units per acre, which falls in that range of our current comprehensive plan for medium-density residential. There's buffer zone on the north and the south side of 15 feet, the east side, there's a 20-foot buffer, and then there's a 35-foot buffer along the west side, and we've worked to have a dense buffer put in, so they're proposing a particular type of plant material to help provide a dense buffer. So just to kind of give you an update of where we started with this, in October, the original plan that came in showed seven buildings, at that time, it was 208 units, I believe, and you notice the purple highlights the area that would, where the wetlands were going to be disturbed, and so it was quite a bit of wetland disturbed area, I think it was 1.8 acres. That included the stream crossing, because you have to cross a stream to get access, so that's obviously going to be part of a disturbance. The revised plan that came back before planning and zoning in January shows that you still see the area up there with the black circle that's blue, that that was still part of the impacted wetland, but in the process, they removed a building, they removed quite a bit of parking, and so they tried to not have as much of impact on the wetlands, and you can see down towards the bottom where there's the green spot now that had been impacted by parking in the building. They've come back and tried to revise the plan again, so they've went back in that northern area that was in purple before, they're not going to disturb that wetland, and by disturbing, at some point, you have to, because across- And by disturbing, at some point, you have to, because of crossing the streams, you've got to disturb the wetland. But they're going to work to put a lot of that area back to allow it to go back to open space and wetland. So here's just a picture of what that RP master plan that was presented to planning and zoning. So the wetlands have been reduced from 1.8 acres to 0.59 acres, about 66% reduction in the impact to the wetland area. The disturbance again is only where the access across the stream will be provided and to provide some stormwater management. The density has been reduced from 207 units to 186 units. They added additional amenities, playground and dog park. And these comments have come from public comment during the planning and zoning, as well as questions and direction for the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then again, they're going to use a continuous screen of evergreen trees and buffers along the west side where the development is going to take place. So if this rezoning is approved, the next step would be consideration of the master plan changes. And that would be to amend the 1994 plan. There'd be a full staff report and details on this provided with the same agenda for the third reading of the rezoning. And then approval of a development procedures agreement would need to be put in place and ready to go for that meeting. If it's not, if the rezoning of the 2.6 acres is not approved, that would remain A1. But the developer still has a right to develop the plan that was approved in 1994. So part of the next steps, if this would move forward, would be required preliminary and final plats to divide back when we talked about the portion that they're looking to rezone was all one big ag portion. They'd have to separate the rezoning, the part that's going to be rezoned from that ag property and plot that piece of property. And then they would combine that RP property with the big 15, currently 15 acres. They would have to delineate and create a parcel for the wetlands and the stream corridor and establish a conservation easement over that, those areas over time. So that would be set aside from the regular development plan. Compliance, they have got compliance with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, they have a permit that was issued. They'd have to construct the required public infrastructure. So there'd be an extension of Lake Ridge Drive all the way to the south property line. And then sewer water, stormwater facilities and any other infrastructure would be part of that. And once that's complete, then they would, they would need to provide a civil, engineered civil site plan that would show that everything that they've done is consistent with their proposed RP master plan. And it must be also compliant with the developmental procedures that I could get through tonight without making a mistake, procedures agreement. And so P&amp;Z recommends by a vote of eight to one, the approval of the rezoning request just for that 2.6 acres with the following conditions, an amendment will have to be made to the 1994 master plan to include those 2.6 acres. And then a development procedures agreement for the amended RP district would be required. And that again, would come to you at the third reading of the rezoning if this moves forward. And I will be happy to answer questions.
And if I can, quick, could you just speak to, for the process of approval beyond just the rezoning that we're discussing tonight, what additional steps would come to council? You know, you mentioned the subdivision, site plan, just speak to some of those.
So the subdivision with preliminary and final plats would come back to commission for approval, which is typically normal. And then the site plan would be reviewed to make sure that it is compliant. So we would be looking at that and making sure that, number one, everything that they said could be done has been completed. Because, you know, the plan is pretty good, but they haven't completed all their stormwater. Because the subdivision wasn't done, stormwater has still, might need to change a little bit. So if there's a major change, that would come back as well. But anyway, any plan that would come back would come back before council for review and approval, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And just so everyone knows, I've been working a lot with staff this last week to make sure this is not the easiest, most simple thing to look at. Because there is the zoning piece, which is what we're primarily discussing tonight, which is around the zoning aspect. The master plan amendment gets approved after the third reading of zoning, which is really where we're looking at the approval of the overall plan at a high level. The subdivision, I'll ask staff to just tell me if I get any points wrong here and start speaking incorrectly. The subdivision approval then that we'd eventually get to is where we would look at and look at traffic, the wetland management and final approval of those aspects of the project. And then the site plans, kind of the final nitty-gritty details of which types of trees, all those types of things. So the hard thing is, is trying to encapsulate what is really, what are we voting on tonight versus whether some of the checkpoints further in this process? So just throughout all of tonight, I'll try to help. Just if you have any questions, it's not the simplest topic, so don't feel bad asking for clarification on any of those. Because I'm guessing we'll have to go back and forth a few times. But for at this point, any other questions for Tom Heil? I'm sure we'll get to more once we.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, this is Weintraub, did you have a map of the 94 approved RP? Or how many units are in that? Was it 15 units per acre?
Yeah, this, this one's probably the best, it was 14.7. But you can see the layout of the buildings.
14.4.
They're highlighted in red of the garages, which are similar to what's on the other plan. So there were nine total units.
Thank you, sir.
And I might add only one access point, but the fire code requires that there be a second one for this number of units.
And also then to help answer a question I know has been, been working with staff on is, regardless of the approval of this zoning change, that current master plan, because it is a grandfathered, it's been there for a long time, it's an already approved plan. If they, if the developer wanted to move forward with that as it is, as it's approved, they can. That's already approved plan, it would still need to go through the subdivision process, the site plan process. But it is currently a previously approved plan. So really, we're looking at the additional rezoning of the 2.68 acres to add to that, which then with the request of amendment to the master plan prompts us to re-review that overall master plan. But at the end of the day, we do also need to be aware, there is that previous plan already approved, but there is still some of those checkpoints around the subdivision approvals and site plans.
Mr. Mayor. I don't know, Thomas, this question is best posed to you or to Administrator Gaines?
If it's, I can't do at all point.
Sure. For lack of a better word, is there an industry standard for how long plans can just sit out here approved? I mean, we're talking about a plan from 30 years ago. I mean, tongue in cheek, but I'm 40, so I was 10 when this was approved. And I might have been the mayor's sixth grade buddy at that point. So I.
It's probably about that point.
I'm just, I'm just confused if it's across the board, this is, this is the case? Or if it's just because it's RP and then is that a typical practice in cities?
Well, the RP is part of the rezoning.
Understood.
So when that's, that's approved, that is the zoning for that piece of property. So, you know, when we have other property that's rezoned, it may sit undeveloped for quite a while. But that doesn't change the zoning underneath if somebody comes in and can meet the standards.
And this is kind of unique to this type of zoning. Most zoning plans don't have a master plan attached, it's unique to a few different types.
We only have a few zoning districts that have a master plan requirement, RP is one of them, the MU district is another. The MU district is a much newer district that has a lot of standards, but neither call for an expiration of plans because as Tom noted, they go with the zoning. Now, we've had a lot of plan amendments that have come through council or have started through P&amp;Z and not made their way to council because of lots of issues.
So ultimately, no sunset?
Correct.
And we'll say it's beyond this conversation, but that is something we've talked about, is looking at to review some of these. But as it stands with this project, the plan is an approved zoning and master plan with that district as is. So we're looking at that current discussion around the 2.6 acres.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm just trying to understand how feasible that 94 plan is. If we have to have two ingress and egress by fire code and some other subdivision plating and stuff that needs to change, how feasible is it that they actually can develop that existing approval?
They would just need to present plans that meet what's been approved, the requirements, so the building placement, the number of parking spaces, the access that we would require now. So we would review it based upon what was approved. But when it comes to public safety, there may be other things that would be required that they would have to meet because of public safety.
So is it safe to assume there are some other things that have happened in the last 30 years that might also infringe upon that existing 94 approved plan? We'd have to bring it up to snuff with those other items as well, or just the public safety in and out?
And I can speak to a little, if I can, the, like, the wetland ordinances. I'm guessing the current ones weren't there probably 30 years ago. This would have to, as part of the subdivision process, still conform with our current wetland ordinances. So there is new things that have been put in place since this original plan was there that the council would still have to review and approve regarding some of those.
I appreciate that clarification, that's what I'm trying to assess is, it seems like even if we don't move forward with this, we're going to get these nine units built, and that's not the case. So I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Yep, correct, there would still be a few pieces of input council would have on there. Any other discussions for Tom at this point before we go to public comment?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Could I just kind of come off of what you just said there, Councilor Gannfield? Looking at the current wetlands, protected lands, overlapping that on the 1994, and what you just said, you wouldn't be able to build about four or five of those buildings.
Incorrect, so that's something that if that old plan were to move forward, it wouldn't quite probably. I mean, this would be based on council review of a subdivision that would go back with staff to look at it. But it would probably have to make revisions for today's.
So then, so then it's not entirely grandfathered?
The master plan is, but it would still have to, correct, go through a subdivision and there'd probably need to be adjustments made based on.
DNR approval of the old?
The DNR is not involved, it's the Army Corps of Engineers, maybe that you mean?
Yep, and I think that would all, that'd have to follow current standards.
Okay.
Any other from council? Okay, thank you, Tom. So we'll move to public comment here, a few things I wanted to note, because I know our city council processes are a little different than planning and zoning. I believe in P&amp;Z, you can speak more than once, typically for council, you have one chance to come up and speak. So just so you know, we are a little different in our policies than what P&amp;Z is. Do want to encourage and thank everyone for coming out, that's the point to this process, is to get the input so that we up here can make a decision based on as much information as possible. So please feel free to speak to it. I would ask, since we do have a lot of people, I'm not going to tell you not to get up and speak. But if it's just reiterating what someone has said, don't feel bad coming up and reiterating it. But if you feel you don't need to belabor the point, it will help us get through the conversation. But again, if you do feel very passionate, that is part of why we're here. So do not take that as, don't come up. I would fully support, make sure and speak your mind on it. So we will go through the public input, I know we do have the developer here. So through the public input process, I'll just try to take notes on all the questions rather than trying to get to them as we're talking. I'll just try to note down everything that there's questions or concerns about. And then we'll try to circle back at the end and have staff, the developer, anyone answer all those questions as we can. So quick, if you'd like, we do have the developer here, and I know he might be calling on you to answer some questions. If you wouldn't mind getting up quick and just giving the introduction.
Thank you, Mayor and council and staff, appreciate being here tonight. I was a little surprised that you were doing it on President's Day. You guys are stalwarts here, working the holiday. I'm Mike Morley and my family are developers. We started, actually, I started laying brick as a little kid. I was born second oldest of 13 kids and my dad was a schoolteacher. And we had to work construction to try and make ends meet. So as we got older, I stayed in the construction development business and had nine children of my own. And eight of them are boys and they all worked with us in the business. And it's been a, been a fun thing to work as family across the country, developing projects that we think bring value to communities and that are helpful. We do a lot of school development, we do some, we've done over 100 schools across the country from the north, or excuse me, from California to Florida and the Carolinas. So it's, it's been a really fun thing to develop things that are needed in communities and enjoyed. We kind of consider ourselves to be community developers. We've done some master plan communities that are as big as 800 and 900 acres and smaller infills. When we got involved with this one, it was brought to us by a person that we had been involved with from Kansas, actually, that brought the project. And it's been nearly 20 years now, so it's been a long time. At the time, we were looking at the plan that you all had just looked at. And it was represented to us that the wetlands were non-jurisdictional, which at the time, they were not. And so we got started and a number of other things happened, including the death of one of the partners. And so it was delayed. But as things happen, as the Corps determined that they would make that a jurisdictional project. And so we became involved in a number of different changes. And as you'll see, I think from the plans, that we've done everything we can to make the project less dense and more community-friendly and to try to not impact wetlands and things of that nature in a way that would be very copacetic with the rest of the community. This project was zoned multifamily well before the current project, the single-family project was put in. And I think the council at the time had a little bit of a concern that if they went in with single-family residents, that they may be reticent to see the multifamily go in next to them. And so they were made aware at the time that this particular project was entitled and did have the zoning needed to move forward. I did have a chance to read a letter that was circulated and signed by a lot of residents, raising concerns that frankly, I think need to be clarified. And thankfully, I think that you'll see that your staff has been very vigilant in looking at all of these issues and requiring that we address all of them before it even got through planning and zoning and came to you as a council. I, like you, have served in public positions before and served on the state legislature for 10 years. And so I know that these positions can be difficult. And it's hard sometimes to look at what the facts are and try and determine what the best policy for cities are. But I'll just go through kind of quickly and let you know that we've looked at the traffic and the pedestrian walkways. We believe that we have enhanced the entire area there. We've put in a lot of sidewalks and pedestrian walkways for safety. We would be putting some connectivity by extending Lake Ridge Road to the south and providing other areas where traffic can get through and help with the overall traffic plan. Recently, we had our traffic engineer review his previous findings. And he indicated that his previous findings were more aggressive, that actually the traffic is less than what they anticipated and that things from a traffic perspective are very good. And later, you know, I've heard a lot on the wetlands. As you know, wetlands have become an issue. And in the last four years, in the previous administration, they became very, very scrutinized. And we went through the process, not only of wetlands, but we also went through very intense endangered species and antiquities testing to make sure that we were not disrupting anything that might be of value to the community. The Corps of Engineers, excuse me, is vigilant in their responsibilities. And so they checked the, checked the wetland areas, which had shrunk. So we did a new, new survey when the city had repaired one of the sewer lines. And it actually shrunk the area of the wetlands. They then rechecked the water and found that there's still sewer leakage into the wetlands. So this is partially induced by sewer drainage. And so that is the main reason that the Corps found the wetlands to be of poor quality. As such, mitigation is much preferred to poor-quality wetlands. And so what we've done is decided that we would help improve the wetland situation by enhancing it, removing a lot of the, or a lot of the aggressive plants and things, that noxious weeds and other plants. that, noxious weeds and other plants that are invasive to the area and make it difficult for wetland plants to occur and for wildlife, wetland wildlife, to survive. So we would be doing that. We would be treating any runoff water into the wetlands, which would enhance the water quality. We'd be replacing the sewer line that is causing much of the wetland, which would probably further shrink the wetland, but would increase water quality, would increase the wetland quality. We've reduced, as you can see from the maps, one full building that was sitting in kind of a wetland area, and have reduced wetlands from about 1.8 acres down to just over half of an acre, which is only the crossings into the project. And we have created an open, friendly environment so that people that want to enjoy the wetlands can do so without trespassing on property and be able to see things that are vegetation, maybe introduce some, some new wetland vegetation and wetland animal life into the, into the area and into the environment. We've made it much open, more open. We've put nice amenities. We've made the whole project very user-friendly to make it an area where the city can be proud of. We've used top-quality materials in our, in our construction and in our development of the project. And I think thanks to our engineers, we've got it laid out in a way that would enhance the environment there significantly rather than kind of what it is now. Couple other things that have been discussed is density. I think I kind of talked about that. We're well within the density that is required or at least allowed. We did even reduce it further by taking one of the buildings out.
Just another minute or two.
Excuse me?
Just another minute.
Okay, yeah. The visual barrier that I think was talked about, we've got a berm and some nice vegetation to create a nice barrier between the single-family residential and the multifamily. And really, multifamily is, is not, at least across the country, is not a negative thing. It's something that's needed in communities. It's places where people who can't afford their single-family residential homes, or even those that prefer not to have to deal with yard work and other things can thrive and have a good experience. So with that said, we'll be available for any questions that you might have, and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Morley. And with that, we will open it up to public comment. So again, five-minute limit, just name and address, and go through.
Ishan Vajpaye, Cedar Falls, but in about five months, Hudson, Iowa. And I'll maybe touch on that towards the end as to why, but I represent the Winding Ridge HOA, so maybe about sixty people, so maybe I'll get a little bit more than five minutes. I'll start that acknowledging that the item on the agenda currently is just the rezoning of the 2.68 acres, but the sole purpose, and I don't think anyone with a straight face can deny it, the sole purpose of that rezoning is to allow this master plan amendment for an apartment building. It's been stated by the staff that the developer wants to combine this with the larger RP proposal, and thus, talking about the development, talking about the site plan is extremely relevant, even if we're just talking about rezoning. And because we already know what the intended use of the rezoned parcel is going to be, because we know it's going to be used to enable what staff has tacitly admitted to be a high-density residential development, this is not, not an innocuous rezoning request that can be voted upon and then have the development and the site plan and the subdivision dealt with later. One directly enables the other. And because we know the intended use, I think, a slide was shown. You can deny this rezoning because unlike, and I, with all due respect, staff can give information, staff can state things, staff can omit things as well. And things admitted from these slides through the P&amp;Z meetings, things admitted from the slide in this presentation are very pertinent and add context to what is actually happening, what the actual definitions of medium-density residential are, and you're being asked to listen to a bird that quacks and call it a tiger. Okay? So I'm going to get off track here a little bit, but the point is, is that rezoning this to RP is not consistent with the comprehensive plan, just because it was on that slide that says they say it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's not, because the comprehensive plan and the future land use map say it's medium-density residential, and they want to use it to build a high-density residential development. Now, again, I'll admit to a weird hobby of mine, which is watching planning and zoning meetings on YouTube. And when I first saw this group of people behind me out there, I said, oh, no. I wondered, are these just a bunch of not-in-my-backyarders? And I said to myself, Ishan, you don't want to be involved in this fight. That's not what you stand for. But inevitably, the call came, and I made it clear to the HOA that I needed to find some solid ground in the law and the code to oppose this and stand up here and speak for them, and it's there. I also learned that meeting with them, these people are really smart people who are not out to raise pitchforks against every development so they can have a free, bigger backyard. They have serious concerns and legitimate feelings of being marginalized. And in my letter, I brought up how this is so different than Cedar West. This is so different than Cedar West. And if you really think about it, you'll see exactly by looking at Cedar West and why that is appropriate, in my opinion, you'll see why this isn't. And then the other thing, you know, the notes go out the window when you hear that the last planning and zoning meeting was on January 22nd, where we could review documents and packets and CAD drawings, and now we're seeing a proposed plan from February? Who else has seen that? Anyone seen a plan from February where now you're reducing wetlands from 1.8 to 5.59 acres? And that's relevant to the density calculation, because in ordinance 20-6, it says that you do not consider wetlands as part of the density calculation unless they're deemed to be those lesser-quality wetlands that are going to be mitigated. But now, that circle up there isn't going to be mitigated. Those credits aren't being purchased. So what, how does that play into it? We don't know, because there's this plan in February that, oh, okay, listen to this, take our word for it, all this, that, and the other, and vote on it tonight, which starts the steamroller, and everyone up here knows it, it starts the steamroller to eventually just accepting the plan. This is step one of one, in reality. So, planning and zoning meeting, October 9th. One thing I really got to point out here, it was stated according to staff, quote, or that you would consider this RP, which means you consider it R4, which is the densest, I think allows for the densest possible residential usages. But because it was R4 before the comprehensive plan, you know, the medium-density residential category from the comprehensive plan, quote, "which would be considered when you're rezoning to RP," but this area is already zoned RP. So then staff, you know, staff is just supposedly calling the balls and strikes, but when the Chair of P&amp;Z asks them how they calculated the zoning, and they say that you don't look at medium-density residential, trust us, you look at RP, you look at R4, I've not seen anything in the comprehensive plan or the future land use map that says if it's already zoned a particular way, that you disregard the land use characteristics in that chart. And I'm running out of time real quickly, but what you got to do is look at that chart. Page 147 of the comprehensive plan, and look what it actually says about medium-density residential. And like these slides before, oh, we fit within it. It allows up to 12. Read the rest of the sentence. Typical maximum density is four to 12 acres, four to 12 acres per unit. There's not a period there. There's a comma, and it says typically in a middle range. Projects at this density may be incorporated in a limited way in a single-family neighborhoods, not with 35 feet between their backyards and four or five apartment buildings. Limited multifamily development. That's what multi-density, multi, medium-density residential is. And then if you look at the high-density residential definition, that's where it says exceeds 10. So you have an overlap here, a sloppy little overlap between four and 12, but it says middle range, which is eight. And then you have 10, which is high-density. So this is high-density, but it's also medium? So think about this. You're, you got a choice between looking at this little sliver of the code, and that's what staff has proposed. I'm sorry, but that's the truth of it. Look at this little sliver of the code, look at it exactly this way and exactly this lens. They're bending over backwards and stretching every definition possible to allow this. And that's the truth. And I'm not saying it's with a nefarious intent, but where's the rest of this context? Why do we have to hire attorneys to get up here and dig through all this extra for you to get the full story? And I didn't even get to finish half my speech. So in Hudson, they're building million-dollar homes.
Mr. Vajpaye.
One more sentence.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
In Hudson, they're building million-dollar homes a quarter of a mile away from huge multifamily developments as the crow flies. But in between, there's condos, there's duplexes, there's townhomes, and it creates a very nice flow. And I think there's lots available, so if anyone's looking.
Thank you, Mr. Vajpaye. Just name and address, please.
My name is Pat Gallus. Address 2805 Minnetonka Drive. I'm an attorney with Correll &amp; Shear. I'm here on behalf of the developer. What has been brought to the City of Cedar Falls and to you folks tonight is something that has taken a long time, a lot of effort, and frankly, one heck of a great project for the City of Cedar Falls. With all due respect to council, this is a not-in-my-backyard situation. Let's not kid ourselves. This real estate that we're talking about tonight, the overall plan, has been zoned RP. This is part of the master plan for the City of Cedar Falls. Our forefathers agreed to allow Winding ridges to be developed. It's a beautiful development. The problem is, it sits next to an RP zoning district, and they knew that when they developed it. And the people who moved into that neighborhood knew that it was multifamily, medium-density when they purchased their homes, and they built their million-dollar homes. The real elephant in the room is, is that these folks don't want to live next to an apartment. Well, unfortunately, for them, that's narrow-minded. This is a quality project that has been brought forward. It is zoned properly. It has been zoned properly. It is in the proper location. But let's look at the benefits that the overall City of Cedar Falls gets out of this project. The extension of Lakewood Drive, which, if you think about it, is a major north-south arterial road that connects Hudson Road to, I'm sorry, First Street to the area south of that, that otherwise you can't get anywhere other than on Magnolia. The development is a self-contained development with two points of ingress, two points of egress. It has its own dog park. It has its own streets. It has its own playground. This development will not access on to, directly on to First Street. It accesses on to Lakewood Drive, which my client has agreed to pay for. Further, the removal of the leaky sanitary sewer line will be done, thereby eliminating the sewage from running across the ground. It will be, this development will be served by a new water main, new sewer, utilities, and fire protection. Cedar Falls Utilities has approved the design. Fire Safety has approved the design. Distracted land, I hope you all have been past it. I live right by there. My mother lives just south of there, so I drive by this at least twice a day. I take my children to school at Hanson Elementary and Holmes Junior High, and so I travel this particular corridor daily. The extension of Lakewood Drive is a, is a much-needed extension of our city streets. My client is willing to pay for that. This also opens up commercial development to the east. The area between Walgreens and this apartment complex is zoned commercial. Lakewood Drive and the streets that will spur off of that over towards Magnolia and to the south will also serve that area. There is a housing need of this type in the City of Cedar Falls, plain and simple. This is the right project for the right location. If you look at the definition of medium-density, we fall within that. This entire project has been labored over with great help from staff. The staff, trust me, has not been our advocate. We have given and taken. We have come up with the best plan for this area. It is zoned properly. It is ready to move forward. And I think if the folks in Winding Ridge give it a chance, they will be greatly amazed at what a wonderful project this can be, for the benefit of all the citizens of Cedar Falls, not just those 20 houses in Winding Ridge or the few houses that, that those of us in, in the ridges and in Royal Oaks. The last thing I'd want to point out is if you look at the overall map of this area, look straight south, there's Thunder Ridge Apartments. That density is way over 15 units per acre. Look at the senior citizen assisted living area that's directly south and a little bit east. This is, this is the buffer between commercial and residential. This is the perfect project for this location. It's the perfect project for Cedar Falls, and the, the city has a great deal of benefit that they're going to receive from seeing this project through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallus. Next speaker, please. I know we have a few others. Just name and address, please.
Spencer Johnson, 2626 Falcon Lane, so ridges. I just wanted to say one thing quick on safety. I've noticed on Eagle Ridge, where it crosses over to Walgreens, I've witnessed more than two accidents there already in the past six months, and I always see debris laying there too, so I'm concerned about what would happen at Lakewood with 186 units and traffic coming from both sides with traffic flowing on First Street going 50, 60 miles an hour. So my opposition is for the safety, and if that's really been reviewed properly, even though the traffic flow can handle it, I don't think we're set up on First Street for another 186 units, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Just name and address, please.
Tammy Stahl, 1009 Lake Shore Drive. I apologize for my voice. I'm here talking about water drainage issues, and what the gentleman that spoke first talked about is a big deal to me. It seems like my experience for myself personally and other people I've seen in town, unfortunately, we have to get lawyers because I just, it's been made kind of aware that unless you get legal aid, you guys seem to do whatever you want. For, for me, around 2018, a new development was envisioned next to our home. My concerns were largely because of extreme water conditions on our street during moderate to higher rain events. The curbs and gutters could not handle the waters as it was gathering on our street. First Street, if you'll go and look, has an extreme decline, both from the east and the west, and comes down to our street, along with kind of from the north and south, and it all just funnels down to our street. The excess. The excess water would drain into the fields and especially the land next door, land next to our house. There was no place for the water to go, so it would go in the, into the field that was next to us, but especially the land right next to our house. And so much water came through that a dry creek developed next to our house. And there became a ravine at the end of that dry creek that became like 40 feet long, 11 feet deep and 11 feet wide. Trees were falling into it. It was so severe from all the water coming down our street. After many requests, when this development was decided, I said, "You need to do a bigger study of all the water issues." And I was, you know, kind of told that all they had to study was the area right there. And I feel like I had to threaten to get a lawyer to get the study expanded. And I was told that it was expanded, so they had to increase the water retention area. But it was a big fight. And then I wanted to see the study, and it turns out they just included one more street into the study, not the whole area. And so then finally, okay, we'll expand, and we'll expand the study. I had to do that three times and each time threaten to get a lawyer. And in the end, the water retention area had to be made three times bigger. And they did do that, but they said that, in the end, they realized that our street was inadequately set up. It didn't have the proper drainage. It didn't have what it needed. But they were going to do the development anyway. And I'm like, "You can't do that. You can't harm the people that are already there." And so they said the only way I could stop it was to do a petition. So I went around and did a petition and got on the agenda for city council. And I came to city council, sitting here like you all are, and three minutes before city council, the mayor came to me and said that my petition was null and void, even though I'd gone to city hall, they, that, and they told me all the guidelines, that there were state guidelines that I wasn't told about. And my petition was null and void. Within no time at all, the lot next to us was filled in. And now we have water going on both sides of our home. An act of God that we didn't have our lower level flooded last year. But I was promised, when all this was done, that there would be, our curbs and gutters would be redone within two to so many years. They've never been touched. We've never heard anything. Nothing's been done. And you say that you people are the only ones we need to talk to. No, there are the employees. Stephanie Sheets is the one that promised me that our street would be taken care of. But now you're looking at new subdivisions and not addressing the issues even from the past. So it's just a shame to me that we have to have lawyers to protect us. And then when promises are made, they aren't kept. And so I'd like to see old promises kept before new adventures are taken. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stahl. Just name an address, please.
My name is Kamyar in Cheyenne, 1703 Washington Street. Just want to share quickly a few ideas for your consideration. I'm not a neighbor to this parcel, so I have no opinion whether you approve the zoning or rezoning. And just a citizen who wishes to help the city better protect the natural areas of our city. There is a wetland on this property, and streets and parking lots, as proposed, infringe on the wetland, which is clearly prohibited by the city ordinance. The applicant has said that this is a lesser-quality wetland, and because of its size has shrunk, and there was a sewer spill in it, it's a lesser quality. I spoke with two wetland scientists, USDA wetland experts who help farmers protect and restore wetlands. Both of them, and the other one was a private wetland restoration company in Minnesota, both of them said that wetlands grow in size and shrink in size. It's just normal. Depends on, depends on how many years of drought you've had, how much rain you've had, lots of, lots of other issues. But the size of a wetland has nothing to do with the quality of a wetland. And also sewer spill, all of Iowa's wetland have been degraded. They have been plowed. They have been sprayed. They have been drained. But as a nation, we're restoring our wetlands because we've learned that they help us in extreme rainfall events. So protecting every bit of water-absorbing capacity of the land means that the city of Cedar Falls is more resilient during huge rainfall events. So all I ask is that, again, regardless of whether you approve or not, with whatever development goes in this site, it can accommodate this wetland and protect it and still build around it, and as our ordinance allows and states so. Thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, Mr. Anjaya. Any other public speakers tonight? Name an address, please.
Tom Nagel, 328 Winding Ridge Road. My primary thought process on the whole thing is related to the rezoning of the A1 to RP. If we're going to rezone it and open up the can of worms for the amendment to the RP, I would like to see the amendment to the RP more in line with the comprehensive plan. We've taken, it seems like there's liberties that have been taken as far as, you know, we're looking at the code when we're allowing the use of the commercial area to be cordoned off, but still used in the density calculations. You know, we're using the code when it's to the advantage of the developer. And I think there's a lot of comments in the comprehensive plan, and it seems like almost everywhere there's a turn to provide a bias for the developer. That's been done by planning and zoning. At the planning and zoning meeting where this was approved, we were told point-blank by the commissioner that, well, we're not going to make everybody happy. I feel at this point, most of the efforts to make people happy have been biased towards the developer. So I would just like to say, if you're going to approve this amendment, or sorry, if you're going to approve the rezoning from A1 to RP, that when the master plan amendment comes up, I would really appreciate some more consideration for the amendment to the master plan, to have some accommodations to bring it more in line with the 2012 comprehensive plan. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nagel. Anyone else for public comment tonight? Just name an address, please.
Atul Patel, 307 Winding Ridge Road. So I've been thinking for a while, and this is a three-month process, and every time it has come down to only four households, Winding Ridge, they are the only people that are affected with this development. And again, 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 I have in my hands 400 signatures plus. These people that I have talked to in town, even statewide city engineers, developers, I yet have to find single person who is saying this is the right project to happen, that is the right high-density project to happen next to a low-density R1 project. I have knocked on doors of neighborhoods. It's just not the Winding Ridge. This ridge is across. There is so much, so many R1 developers all around to the, except for the east, everything is surrounded by R1 zone. Each and every household has said that they're going to be affected by one way or the other. And every time a developer says it's only four households, just a Winding Ridge, that's not correct. And we are talking about density here. We are not against the project by any means. This project can, like Ishan Boshby said, even I had said before, I mean, ME associates owns the land around. It just seems like they are forcing this whole thing on this one tract of land, leaving the rest of the land that they could develop. I mean, there's already high-density areas by the Thunder Ridge Apartments, by the Fairway, by the senior living facility. They could just put all the stuff down there and kind of come down towards west, lay it down. We are talking about common sense approach. We are talking about citizens who just want to live in harmony, just have a layered approach, common sense approach from transition from R1 to R4 or whatever it takes. It's just this, on one hand, they are saying that this is grandfathered, we're going to do no matter what happens. But then here we are trying to fight over 2.6 acres of rezoning. So it's very clear that this 2.6-acre zoning is so critical for what they want to do in order to manipulate the calculations to come to the high-density 182-unit apartment. If not for that one, that would be looking a lot less. So on one hand, only thing that we got, that, of course, the city planning and zoning people abide by the codes and the conducts and all that, but as a council member, you are not abided by any, following any codes or conduct. It's a common sense approach. What I'm trying to tell is, there's options available for this project to happen. City needs the project. Developer needs the project. They got the land that they can shift around. But it seems like they're adamant on starting from right few feet away from a Winding Ridge Development House or whatever, like the development they call in. And then they are just adamant about starting from there and kind of going to the east when they have all the high-density commercial tract of land. Everything's ready to go. If they just flip the thing around, everything will come slowly and be nice. I mean, people, we are talking about, a simple thing here is, we want a layered, common sense approach to this whole thing. I mean, I have, I have 400 residents petition. It's not four houses. And then this sets up a stage for future as to like, if this development goes on, then how can a future development or developer like me, if I want to do something like next to an R1 development, how are you going to say no to me if I want to do that? So what I'm trying to tell is, yeah, 30 years back, it was, it was there, it's grandfathered. But it's a long 30 years, like many of us already know. I guarantee you that everybody has a question in their mind. Yeah, it's one thing that there's rules and laws and 30 years and grandfather and all that, but things have changed in 30 years. There has been, of course, we as owners knew about this development, so we are not arguing that we didn't knew about it. But we had no idea that this development would not be layered, structured, not being thought of for the citizens. And unfortunately, again, 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 it's getting rougher and rougher. And from the developer, all I'm hearing is, "It's great for the city. City needs the proper tax monies," or it is, this development has to be there just because there's a need for it. All we are saying is, "Restructure it, reposition it, do it in such a way that everybody can live with the development." But the way they are doing it, we are just refusing that that's not the right way of doing it. None of the development that I know of has been successful when they adjoin, right from a very low density to a very high density. There's still one development I have to find, it looks rosier to start with, but in a year, two years, three years, none of them has success over this one. So I just want to make sure that you as a council members, you are elected officials, you represent us, you got to put yourself in our shoes. And all we got left when city planning and zoning approved this or anything, they specifically told that now you will take it to the council members. And here we are, just asking for something to think of. And if, if they were to still proceed with it, that at least the 2.6-acre land, let's not touch it. Let's just see what happens without it. I mean, let them see what they can come of it. But if you guys do okay this rezoning.
It is time, Mr. Patel.
Yeah, it adds that calculation, and then the density goes up, which is where we have a problem. So I just want council members to consider that rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Anyone else for public comment? Probably know the process by now.
Alana Aldrich, 3614 Beaver Ridge Circle. I just wanted to touch on this point, just as a question. I don't know the answer to it. I just haven't heard it brought up at all. With 186 units, you can only assume a lot of those are going to have kids. Hanson would be the school that these kids are going to go to. That's where my kids go. I've got a third grader this year, Annalise, a first grader, Michael, and a preschooler at Clover Patch who will be in kindergarten next year there. And I don't know if, I don't, again, that's extrapolating to say, oh, how many kids are going to be there. But where are all these kids going to go to school? Hanson isn't going to be able to accommodate 100 extra kids. So just in, as the planning goes forward, something to keep in mind, I don't know what that kind of budget looks like within the city to expand Hanson or whatever would have to be done. But I know from our state, our state senators and state representatives have made it clear that the public education budget is not a priority. So, you know, where's the money going to come from to boost up education for all these kids that are going to be coming in to that area? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aldrich. I'll make sure we address that here, will we? Did you want to come up for public comment? If it's just to answer a question, we'll come circle back to it. But if you want to come up and use your five minutes, you can.
I just want to emphasize something, but you want to answer your question?
We'll come back to it, if that's okay. Anyone else for public comment tonight?
I think she's asking if you're going to answer that question or you want to...
Oh, I will answer that question if you were wondering that. I'll get some feedback to it when we get to the end here.
I was going to make a comment.
Yes.
Okay. If everyone's okay with coming up? Yep, go ahead.
She's thinking you're answering.
Okay. Go ahead.
I live in 218 Winding Ridge Court, and I want to clearly emphasize that the people living in that neighborhood or ridges are not narrow-minded, rich, root, or rejected the other groups' residents over there. That is a very kind of big excuse for us. We are just simply concerned citizens. We love our community. We love our people in our community. And all of us live there, raise our kids, or sometimes grant kids. And we are not that rich. We just invested one houses and making the ends like everybody. We are not a big developer, the all over the nations, just working hard people over there. And we are not open to development or different to people that coming us. Only think that we are concerned citizens. We just want to develop something that will fit and not disrupt the values of the neighborhood, the values of the community. Because each community, each neighborhood has their own characteristics. When the developer plan is developed, master plan, 30 years ago, 40 years ago, and there are some also kind of like a rezoning issues after that based on how the area is developed. We have to consider the personality, the characteristics, the environment when there is a rezoning. And if there is a kind of very low density and higher density other side in between, has to be the balance. This is not a big city. This is a small community. If the density is in here one or two, and the other side is 10 Thunder Ridge that they have, in between has to be like a four and maximum and a five. This is show the balance and the harmony over there. And I myself is city planner. When I was in the educating Iowa State University, I got my degree, and I worked in here, or I worked in my country of origin, this is what we do. When the rezoning is happened, we just go investigate the neighborhood, and then we just did our survey, get the citizen input of the citizens and how they feel, how the environment is developed, then we do the rezoning over there. And kind of, it's a kind of, that will fit, it's not to disrupt the community. So developer can build and say that our community is needed. But when we look at the housing shortage in the community, there are not a shortage in community in the Cedar Falls. There are plenty available of those for different income of the level and empty places. So I don't know that is a, that is a kind of, there is a difference. We are not against the development. Something that is not going to disrupt the neighborhood over there. So we are open to development, but it's not something that is create of something. Because all other concerned residents, residents emphasize school issues, traffic issues, crime issues, or whatever, everything or the high zoning. So developer will go, we residents will pick up the issues to solve the problem rest of our life over there, which is, in the long term, is not going to benefit the whole community. It's kind of not beneficial. It's hunting is create issues over there instead of the helping. Like, we have to look at it from the long... Like, we have to look at it for the long term instead of the short term focus. This is narrow-minded, if you focus the short term like they got emphasized. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms., and what was the name again?
My name is Phoebe Yetikendu, 218 Winding Ridge.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment, please? Just name an address, please.
Kim Jordan, Cedar Falls. I think what's really a big picture here, and it, it seems like it's been happening for many, many years, and it's kind of a neglect of preserving some of the historical things and having a good focus when we do take on a new project. Preserving wetlands, preserving buffer spaces are critical. And we had a perfect opportunity to show, you know, how maybe Cedar Falls could move forward on some of this with that intersection of First and Hudson Road. And there was a call to, kind of just, I actually stopped down at the city hall on Tuesday of la, of two weeks ago, and I asked if I could receive a call back. I was concerned about the removal of trees that were going to be affecting windbreak.
Ms. Jordan, we, we won't be discussing that.
Right, but it is in regards to wetlands and so forth.
In this case, though, it needs to be specific to this development.
Okay, rezoning is another big thing, because that's something that we're doing throughout the city on a lot of other projects. So this one, I think we're, we're showing that we have this project that we've had in plan for a long period of time, and it was going to cost the developer a large sum of money to put in infrastructure. It is nice to see that a developer is willing to take on some of that responsibility, but that's one of the reasons that it was prevented years and years in the planning. And yet, there are bigger pictures to the implications of the wetlands and the animal redistribution and the damage that that might entail. Insurances also are going to be playing into that and just trying to work within the supporting policies that's within your, your fiscal planning, which says that you protect the unique and natural and historic features. So that is, it's already set in place. Yes, the neighbors knew what was going on, but historic and then spreading upon it. And where do we have, we are an aging community. It is nice to see maybe 55 and overs, maybe transitioning from a really nice setting like that. Years ago, I think that was kind of the plan when we looked at Royal Oaks and the ridges. And yet, here we are, just subsequently changing zoning to fit needs and spaces of projects that never got off the, off the ground because of very high cost infrastructures, which I think that we really should be holding the developers highly accountable for, because with our taxes increasing and the way that we're spending more and getting less historically in this community, it's, we, our voices do need to be heard on a multiple layer of projects that are in the works and, and have been neglected and we haven't even been able to address. I was out in the audience, I was out in the hallway, and I really wanted to speak those five minutes, and I just couldn't get through to, to really kind of set some of that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Is there, just quick, you mentioned not being able to speak, was there a particular instance you were referring to?
I wanted to speak on the...
I just wanted to make sure if there was a time where you didn't get your chance to speak publicly, I made sure I looked at the process, if there was a reason I got missed, was there a time when you weren't able to come in and speak?
No, I was out in the hallway. It's, it's a very large room, you know, full of people, and I was just assuming that there would be a lot of five minute before the, the meeting type of talking.
Okay.
But my concern always and, and will be searchatory hospital and maintaining public safety to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Any other public comment for tonight? Just name an address, please.
Good evening, my name is Cameron Lee, I live at 220 Winding Ridge Road. I do want to thank the developer and the developer's attorney for, for laying out some of the, the content that I can cover. When I moved into this house four years ago, I, I did my homework. I looked and saw that that was zoned RP. I looked and I saw that there had been a couple of attempts at development of this land while, previous to my living there. I also learned that the Army Corps of Engineers had denied basically permits to develop that land for the wetland reasons that everybody has stated. What I didn't know, and apparently what nobody knew at that point in time, is that the apartments to the north of there were leaking sewer and sewage into the ground, thus allowing the developer to use the loophole in the city's statute, which is incredibly rock solid. I mean, if you read that and you read it all the way through, it basically says, you cannot touch this. You cannot touch it, you can't mess with it, you can't move it, except if it degrades. Right? Well, now here we have a situation where by the city's own, whatever you want to call it, accident, negligence, water under the bridge or sewer under the ground, we have degraded the wetlands, thus allowing the developer the opportunity to use this small teeny part of that entire statute to try to move something forward. I've asked this, if you guys have spent any time watching any of the planning and zoning committing, I think I have asked this in almost every setting, nobody has ever answered me up to this point, why are we not having conversations about what it would take to actually fix it? Yes, it was farmland 35 years ago, then it became wetlands, which gives me encouragement because we built wetlands, which means we should be able to do it again. So I would ask you guys to consider that as part of this entire project. You know, if anybody could stand up here and scream, "Not in my backyard," it would be me. My, if you know the land and the plot, basically in the back in terms of sightlines or whatever it is that you want to complain about, my house is probably going to be ground zero. I'm not screaming that. I'm asking for reasonable conversation, reasonable accommodations, you know, it's very frustrating. We had, you know, the meetings in November where all of a sudden council comes in, asks for a bunch more time. That's fine. During that entire time, nobody in the community was contacted at all. We learned that between, you know, the P and Z approval and now, there's a new submission. Was anybody in the community contacted at any point in time? Not at all. Like, it's very hard to kind of come to some sort of compromise in something that we as an entire community can agree to and work towards when there's not communication. You know, if, if I want to do something with my neighbor, Tanner, I'm going to walk over there and I'm going to talk to him and be like, hey, I want to put in a fence, or I want to build a tree here, or, you know, I want to put in a pool. We're going to have that conversation. That's not happening here. So I would ask that this go back, we continue to work on it, you know, I've spoken to almost all of you, I've had one-on-one meetings with most of you, some of you I've even walked the land with. You know, I do think that the plot lines and the, and the charts that you guys are being, being shown are not actually accurate. You know, I've, I've walked this multiple times now. You know, these little lines that are supposed to represent the streams that we're supposedly can't touch are not accurate. It's, you know, I think there wasn't a packet that I saw an actual larger representation of the wetlands that was put in there. Like, that's probably actually more an accurate view. Obviously, we're seeing the developer's view here because they're going to want to show the smallest amount of impact as they possibly can, thus allowing for the largest amount of development that they possibly can. So, you know, this isn't an easy job that you guys have. I know it's a, a difficult decision. I'd ask you to go to apartments.com, tell me, do we actually need apartments right now? Schools in session, all of the apartments that we need in order to, to take, take care of the students who are in town or anybody else might be looking for an apartment, hypothetically, we should be relatively close to max capacity right now. Go look if there's an apartment available. There are hundreds of apartments available. So is this serving a need that we need right this minute? I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Anyone else for a public comment tonight? Name an address, please.
Dan Arons, 1501 Technology Parkway, that's VJ Engineering. Anybody that was either at or watching the P and Z meetings is probably tired of hearing me talk about this, so I won't stand up here and go through everything again. Just a couple of things. So, we've heard a lot about the wetlands. The wetlands have been studied by environmental engineers, there's test wells, they've been tested, there's been multiple tests, different tests from different companies that have proven this. The US Army Corps of Engineers does not lightly classify these wetlands as what they are. It's, I worked there, that's just the fact of it. They don't just go ahead and say those are junk, get rid of them. They have to be mitigated. It costs a lot of money to mitigate them. The plan would be to mitigate these here locally, there's a new mitigation bank here just on the south side of Cedar Falls, actually technically, I suppose that's Hudson, but we got some fans here for that. And it's a whole new mitigation bank. So I wanted to touch on that. 1.6 acres of wetland has already been approved by the Corps of Engineers to be mitigated. And throughout this process, we've worked towards reducing, mitigating the mitigation needs to bring that down to only 0.6 acres. That includes a little bit over a half acre of wetland and a little bit of stream, stream bank, those are actually classified different, I won't get into that. We heard a lot about water quality. These projects, just like any projects in Cedar Falls, has to meet the water quality detention, water quality standards that are laid out now by the state. And those have to be proven to our engineering staff and, and all those calculations have to be done. So any new development that doesn't include those wetlands, any new permeable space would then have to detain water on the site and release at that state mandated prescribed release rate. That should increase the issues downstream. I actually worked with the folks that lived downstream of this in the past, they had to dig out their pond, they had a lot of siltation, and we worked with PCI to get that fixed. Well, a big part of that was the fact that we have these erosion area from this property that we're talking about. This would go a long ways towards fixing that erosion and that amount of soil that's going downstream. We talk about the beloved wetlands. What I'm seeing, and I met with Mr. Lee, we had a great afternoon, we went and walked the, we went and walked the property. There's, there's some nice trees out there, but the majority of this area is completely covered by honeysuckle, which is an invasive species classified by the DNR. I mean, it's hard to walk through there. It, it is a great area, there's no question, and I think it could be a great area for Cedar Falls, but it's mostly covered in honeysuckle and it's hard to walk through. I guess, I said I wouldn't talk too long. So, one last point is, right now, obviously, we're talking about just rezoning this ag, this, this remnant ag portion of this property. That 94, however, why that zoning ordinance is the way it is, that we still have a master plan required from 1994, we can debate why that is the way it is, I think it is kind of a little wonky, but that's just an opinion. We can mitigate that portion down there and not use that ag and come back with something very similar to this that doesn't utilize that ag portion. But our goal is to work with the wetlands and not be mitigating the wetlands. And that's not just a pricing. I, I, I agree with, with the gentleman that came up here and talked about the wetlands. I love wetlands, too. I've sat through many, many of these Corps of Engineers mitigation talks about why we're doing mitigation and why the Corps is actually pushing mitigation, because there is reasons for it. We're replacing low quality wetlands with high quality wetlands. So what we're trying to do here is work with, with the actual layout of the property, and you can see that on what was approved and what we're trying to get approved now. Yep, and I will end it at that unless anybody has any questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arons. Anyone else for public comments? Just name an address.
Christina Maiman, 1107 Eagle Ridge Road. I do not live in a million dollar house, you can look up. I also just can't let someone who's getting paid to support the project be the last one up here. So you guys all got an email from me. My biggest concern has to do with the traffic, which was already talked about, but what my neighbor didn't talk about was the actual traffic studies that we've been told repeatedly are accurate. That was taken in May of 2020. I've heard that was in a very expensive traffic study. I think you use your money in a bad way, sir, because everybody knows that the traffic in May 2020 wouldn't have actually been accurate. They then go back to July of 2017, again, when school was not in session. So we've got two traffic studies that are talking about cars and kids when they are at home during the summer. We've been told that it's okay, all the new developments in the last five years on Union Road won't affect the traffic at all. If anybody goes, they know that's not true. The new high school on 27th Street isn't supposed to affect the traffic either. I don't know, doesn't make sense to me. But I, what I do know is I'm there every single day trying to take a left-hand turn, and I can't get out. It's 45 miles an hour, people are going 50, there are kids trying to cross the street, they can't do so, they have to go up and do the one crosswalk all the way up at Magnolia. There are kids that live in Winding Ridge who go across four lanes. The traffic study has said 292 cars are going to enter First Street during peak traffic hours in the morning. There is no way, they, they say right turn only on both Lake Ridge and on Eagle Ridge, nowhere does it talk about left turn, where you have to actually go across the lanes of traffic. So really, safety is my biggest concern, and I don't think those traffic studies are accurate at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maiman.
Sorry.
Any other public comment for tonight? All right, seeing none, give a chance just in case anyone's in the hallway. All right, seeing none, then we will close the public hearing and look for a motion to pass an ordinance mending the Cedar Falls zoning map from A1 Agricultural Zoning District to RP Planned Residence District approximately 2.68 acres of property located at the south side of West First Street upon its first consideration.
So moved.
Seconded.
The motion is seconded and open for discussion. I will quick go through some of these items I wanted to speak to here as part of the discussion. Let me pull my notes back up. So on the school capacity question, I, she may have had to leave, but we'll speak to it. So on the school capacity question, we do work very closely with the school districts. We work with them to plan ahead on what we know are coming up for developments, and then each year they do look at the rezoning of their schools, do they have to shift people from certain districts? I know some of us maybe got rezoned into a different school when we were in school, and that's part of that process. So we do typically work with the school districts to plan years ahead of what we're looking at for capacity, and then that really is what they plan ahead for, that's what their funding is for, to expand capacity. So typically, it's the schools that look at, okay, what are their needs going to be? How do we plan our facilities? And they work on kind of shifting the districts around based on the growth. Essentially, they work to expand based on how the city's going to grow. Doesn't mean it's always easy, but that's the process that we follow, and essentially for most communities, the schools work to accommodate how the community is growing. I know there was a comment that, you know, essentially, I don't know if it was really directed toward council or staff or anyone specific, I think just the mechanism of city government, that often we do what we want. I can't speak for past governments. I know it's been a very big focus of myself and this council to make sure we are listening, that we're not just taking things as they're coming, and I know it's one of the earlier comments, the worry that if this part of the process passes, we won't do our part to really look at, acknowledge, and be critical of the further parts. I can only speak for myself and us up here. I do think this group is very intentional about listening to residents, taking the feedback, and taking the role very seriously of what the stage is, what the appropriateness of each vote is. And I at least do feel comfortable knowing myself and this council, making that commitment that regardless of the zoning change, each stage does have different approvals and things we're looking at. This group would take it seriously and make sure, just because we approve step one, doesn't mean we're guaranteed to approve step three. And I can... And I can, I'll say that on record, so if I don't follow through with that, you can yell at me. And so, I think then the next item, there was the consideration of the medium density, and this is kind of, this will segue into our bigger conversation of, this is a messy project. You do have kind of a legacy approval that does go back 30 years. It is still a legally standing approved master plan. Us as a group can't really go back and change that. There has been changes in the definition of what medium density is today compared to what it was back then. And we can't really do anything about that 1994 plan and that approval. And I think that's why we've tried, and staff has tried, to work with the development to look at, okay, based on what was approved previously, how do we try to bring what's being brought forward now kind of closer to what's something amenable? Doesn't mean we've reached that point. But at least working to say, okay, this is a process where there is a long-term previously approved plan, things have changed since then. How do we try to, within the willingness and ability for us to hold to the property rights that exist while also trying to make this something that fits today's reality? I do think, and I know it wasn't specifically in the packet, but I know I've had conversations because it came up from questions from a lot of you on how that density is defined, the whole eight to 12 or four to 12, but saying that it's, should be toward the middle. And again, the 1994 plan's there, this is to look at rezoning the 2.68, but also, it is fair to say that we really are, in this discussion tonight, kind of discussing the whole project because it does go together. Yes, we will have different staged pieces of this where we will be able to get into more specific approvals. But I think it's fair to say tonight, we are kind of discussing, as this is the first time it's been brought to us, at least the overall concept. Because the messiness of some of this is, yes, we're just voting tonight on the zoning, but we have to be able to give direction, I think, for the community and for the developer on, okay, beyond the zoning, what do we also expect to see that we would like to see come forward in terms of the master plan, the preservation of the wetlands? Because there is potentially still more work to do on this. So, long way, short way of saying, this is complicated. You know, I've discussed with a lot of you to make sure I knew everything you were gonna need more information on to bring forward. So at that point, I will just open it up to the questions, I'm sure, guys would like to ask.
Mr. Mayor, can we address another thing that's come up a couple of different times with regard to the leaking sewer? I think I'd like, excuse me, Mr. Shraghi to kind of address that because that would be what they call an SSO, which we would have to report constantly, so.
So, a little bit of background, November 2023, there was a plugged sanitary sewer line, fairly common a few times a year throughout the city. Upon investigation, there were numerous tree roots and things that caused a surcharge in the pipe, backed up and was flowing out of the manhole, and that was in November 2023. Proper protocols were taken, we had to notify the, like Mr. Gaines had alluded to, the DNR of the SSO, proper protocols to do a cleanup in that area. And just for everybody's benefit, generally, sanitary sewer, gravity sanitary sewer, water flows in. The depth of the sewer is between eight and 12 feet. It acts as a drainage tile, so groundwater, we have ionized issues all over the city. Sanitary sewer water doesn't flow out of the joints of the pipe, water comes in. So, the only way it flows out of the pipe is with a blockage, and that has been, been addressed in November 23.
Do you know how long that blockage was there for?
Do not know.
Okay. Thank you, Director. And one other item I did have on my list, Director Sheets, this might be for you, was there was a few mentions of a new plan that's been brought forward that maybe wasn't seen previously by the community. I don't, can you speak to maybe if you heard those concerns, what that was?
So, during the process, the public process of going through the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as City Council, the developer may be making changes that are reviewed at those public meetings. So, re-notification doesn't happen because it's happening at the public meetings. So, what Mr. Weintraut showed on the slide with three different development, kind of showed the progression, the middle slide is what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of, and since then, the developers reduced the impact to the wetlands even further.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, open it up to council questions and discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I'm, if I'm a Director Shraghi, I just wanted to follow up real quick. Was that SSO in 2023 completely mitigated? So, there's no more blockage or anything, and the ground cleanup was already done?
Correct, and that was in November 23, and staff continually monitors that area once per month.
Can you speculate for me what further degradation to the wetlands has persisted since that cleanup?
None to my knowledge. Wetland quality can be based on many factors, invasive species, as noted prior. It depends on what the scientists found at that time. I mean, I, to my knowledge, I have no information regarding that the sanitary sewer degraded the wetland quality.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, could we get some clarification on the traffic and what jurisdiction we have over that road?
I don't know if Director Sheets or Tom, if you want to speak to just when the traffic discussion would be brought up, how that relates. I know we talked a little bit about how the DOT has a lot of the ultimate authority on what happens with the First Street intersection and what they might require for new traffic studies.
That would be part of a future step in the process, similar to stormwater. The DOT does have their own review process regarding a traffic impact study. So, that information would have to be sent to the DOT staff and reviewed, and they would permit the access along West First Street.
And I believe, if I speak correctly, that it is also in the purview of this group to decide whether or not we feel those traffic studies were adequately provided the information we need, or if there's additional information needed as part of the subdivision discussion.
Mr. Mayor? Could I take that question a step further? So, we would have no ultimate authority if we were to say we'd like, I've heard discussion on turn lanes, I've heard discussion on egress. Out of this proposed plan, we have no ultimate jurisdiction on saying we'd like to have this done on First Street because that's not our road? Is that a fair statement?
I would say yes. I mean, ultimately, the DOT does the permitting on that, but obviously, I'm sure there'd be some, some type of negotiation with the DOT if something above and beyond were to be done.
I would just, based on that, there, there's just another element of concern for me and why this project just gets messier. I just, I don't, I don't feel as though there is an ultimately, a whole lot of control we have, whether we pass this zoning change and we say, okay, we've reduced it down to 186 based on their proposal today, or we don't, and when they're looking at 216, and we still don't really have a lot of jurisdiction on what happens with First Street. It's just, a plan from 30 years ago is what we look at if we don't pass this, and that's just, it's just a mess. So, I mean, I think it's a darn if you do and darn if you don't. And that's, that's just unfortunate all the way around.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor?
No, go ahead. I'll let Dungo, since you haven't had a chance at Counselor.
Oh, I want to hear what Dustin had to say. Okay, so I'm just gonna, I mean, this is, as has been stated, has been going on for a few months now, and I think, sorry, sorry for my loud voice. So, things that I've heard, first, I do appreciate, first of all, the community's engagement over and over and over again. I feel like, sometimes people feel like we're not listening. We absolutely are, I mean, people, I will say this, if you emailed me today or you called me today, I was at work. So, I rolled in hot, these guys can attest to it, I was here about two minutes before council meeting started. I didn't respond to you, but I definitely read your, your emails and listened to your voicemails as I was getting ready to come here. So, we do listen. The other thing is, is I do appreciate the, the work of the developer and the staff as the process goes on. I mean, that's, so what we see here is, I think the way I look at it is, is the, the voiced concerns from folks have been kind of laid out, and, and that's why you get this change in, in the plan that we see here. I do want to reiterate, and I understand that the communication or the thought of, well, you're just starting the process and it'll just go through and be, you know, there's no stopping it, that's not true. This is rezoning, so all the other process still would have to come before, excuse me, before council and if needed, before planning and zoning. These are my concerns. My major concern is the, the wetland. I don't want to get into whether it's a degraded wetland or, you know, as a farm kid, I, I know far, past farming practices, and even current farming practices, aren't always the best for, you know, that wetland. I bet every single one of us that has a farm or grew up on a farm probably has an area on our farm that was probably torn apart with a plow. The way I look at it, though, is, you know, once it sits for a little bit, it's almost like a wound and it starts to heal a little bit. And so, instead of going and picking the scab, whether the quality of the scab is great or not, I'm not for that. So, I guess, no matter what, what happens tonight, I want it to be heard that as, if the process would continue, that's something that, that I can't get down with. And I understand that this is a area of land that might be difficult to develop if you don't touch the wetland. But that's very important to me, I'm only one of seven, but I want that to be loud and clear. Let's see. Do, 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 sorry. And then, in the size of the wetland, you know, again, I feel like you get different opinions depending on who you are in the process, and that's not taking away from anyone. You know, once upon a time, I would have probably really, the Army Corps of Engineers, nothing against, I'm not talking about the people that work for the Army Corps of Engineers, but I'm talking about as you, as you take away power from entities, it's, it kind of gives, when you're a person like me who's sitting in a place where, you know, why all of a sudden did we go from it wasn't approved to, now it is approved? Again, I'm not citing, or citing anyone who's doing the work there, but maybe the policies from higher above have changed. And so, that kind of, you know, weighs on my mind a little bit. I, I can appreciate the community's concern about the density and about the traffic. You know, I, I feel like there has been work to get that lowered. I understand that the developer, you know, they're not doing this out of the goodness of their heart, and I'm sure they're lovely people, they are doing it to make money. And I don't slight, that's, that's fine, we all have to have a living. But between the wetland and, and not touching that with parking lots or roads or access points, and then maybe getting the density down a little bit more, I'm, I'm just talking about like if this part would go on. These are things that would, that bother me about this, this project as it's written in front of us. And obviously, this is not the, the final site plan. Yeah, I just, I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. And, and if you watch this at all, I will never slight our staff. I appreciate how hard our staff works. Our staff works with the direction of the council. And so, as always, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Counselor. And something I'll just reiterate is, yes, the item, I said this earlier, but just to reiterate, yes, the item we're voting on tonight is the zoning, but I think it is fair for us to make sure we give some clear direction on, regardless of the zoning piece, are there things we're going to have concerns with regarding the master plan and the density and how that comes back to us? Because that'll come, if the zoning were to move forward, that would be after the third reading. We would then be approving the master plan, which we can have input at that point. And then, the subdivision later would be some of the wetlands. So, it is, I think, appropriate for this group to discuss and make sure, if you have some thoughts about the density, about the wetlands, now is a good time to make sure and generally get that out, knowing tonight it is the vote on the zoning. But it's good to make sure we have that discussion so that the developers and the community kind of know where those future items will stand to. Counselor?
So, to put it in perspective, you and, and Chris were talking about being in sixth grade homeroom when this was done. I think Dave Sires and I were at our 15-year class reunion talking exactly about this piece of property at that time. So, I can remember back. I, I share concerns on the wetlands, and again, I'm not going to go into the scientific, are they degraded or, or not? I do have concerns about other pieces of property in, in our community that already we've lost and have certainly not going to regain the trees that we've lost in certain areas, the wetlands we've lost in, in certain areas. But if we can work on this piece of property, and from what I can understand, the rezoning is going to affect the density, which is already a concern. So, I'm, that's where I am with that of, of, of being of concern for that. So, that's not as long as Kelly's, but I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Counselor. And to the density piece and the zoning for tonight, again, if, speaking, I'm just in case scenarios, if the group does not support the rezoning of this tonight, there is still the 1994 approved master plan that I believe was the engineer spoke of, can move forward. Again, still has to meet the subdivision ordinances, would still have to address the wetlands, but that master plan does stand. So, the addition of the 2.68 acres that's rezoned tonight obviously is a separate 2.6, and I think it is fair to say, okay, does it meet what is now our today's standards of medium density? Again, this whole conversation is just messy because there is an existing plan that is approved, that has legal property rights that comes with that. So, for that additional look at the, approving the zoning tonight, it is kind of that question of, okay, how does it play in with the whole project? If that's not approved, we still have a discussion with the developer of, does the rest of the project continue to move forward simply without the 2.68 acres? Again, still having to go through subdivision, site plan, all those processes. But just want to kind of make sure everyone understands kind of how that plays in, is that 2.68 acres is a separate project, but really is part of the whole, but there is still some things to figure out even if the rezoning of that isn't approved tonight.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. I have a couple of things I'd like to point out that I find troubling. It was pointed out early on in the discussion from the public, the conflict between the comprehensive plan describing the land use characteristics for medium density, four to 12 units, big range. Then, it's pointed out that the high density has 10 units per acre. So, you've got a significant conflict there in description. We're using the word messy, that's very messy to grab onto and decide what to build. Then, speaking of messy, I would go over to the description of the density requirements as they compute the total area basis, as it's written here. I have a hard time including things like the retention pond in usable land. If a person only knew what was in that retention pond, the hydrocarbons that are going to wash off the parking lots, contaminate the soils, herbicides and pesticides that come downstream from the lots to the south. That stuff does not degrade, and I don't, I don't see that land being livable, usable land in the computation of this. It's one of those intangible things that I have a problem with. And we've had discussions in other projects throughout the city over my term on, terms on council, that, you know, the hydrocarbons don't degrade, there's life chemicals, is the term they use for that. But those are my concerns in this, and I, I don't see this density being accurately applied given those components.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Ayers, I'd actually like to ask you a question on the 1.6 acres, 1.68 acres approved for mitigation by the Army Corps of Engineers. Can you explain what rationale for that mitigation effort they used? You've been in those conversations, I assume?
Yeah, yep. And I did come into this late, if you didn't watch all the planning and zoning commissions. My former owner of our company was working on this for 20-some years, and I've kind of stepped in. But this was based off of the environmental study that was performed by an environmental engineer in their firm. They review that, our request, historical records, and they actually did a site visit. We talked about this being messy. They found this piece of property so interesting due to some of the different sewer issues that have gone, gone on over many, many years. I know that was one of I know that was one of the issues that Chase brought up, was that recent one. But they found it so interesting, they brought a class out there to, the Corps actually went and looked at this property as part of one of their continuing education classes. Some of you might know my dad was a city engineer for many years, and he has recollection of issues with the sewer out there over time. So, it was a combination of all of that, but mainly just the information from the environmental studies. There's test wells out there right now that can still be checked because it's just been an ongoing issue, so.
All right, appreciate it, sir.
Yep. And can I just say on the density thing real quick? That is the...
It's okay with that.
It's... Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you, sir.
Can I let the council know if they would like the information?
One thing I would like to clarify, and I guess I'm asking maybe Attorney Rogers on this, it's come to my attention, I don't understand the full code behind it, but in order to proceed with a mitigation effort, it sounded like there was a procedure that would have to come through city engineer's recommendation and council approval to mitigate said wetlands. Do you know in the code if that's the proper procedure? And has it, I mean, it hasn't been done, so.
So, my understanding is the Corps and city engineer approval, if it's in appropriate circumstances determined by the city engineer. I haven't spoken with the city engineer, so I'm not sure where that piece falls into this.
I appreciate the input. I think in a letter from other council that we all received, it was stated that the procedure they found in code was that mitigation could proceed with the Army Corps of Engineers' approval if the city council wanted to override it and the city engineer had proceeded with that request. I don't think either of those two things have been done, so I find some inconsistency as to how the mitigation proposal was brought up. I also find...
Really quick, if I can, Director Sheets, could you speak to that? Because I believe those processes were...
Yes, that is a provision in our subdivision code that would have to be dealt with, with the subdivision.
So, had those processes been done to this point for reviewing the...
We have not started the subdivision process.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, to that end, I'm confident in that statement because we're here now and haven't approved that yet. I did find another inconsistency, that city engineer recommendation would have to be made, but our presentation started tonight saying that we don't get recommendations from city staff. We just get facts, so there's some inconsistency there.
If I can quick clarify, I did say, they will make recommendations based on...
If I may continue, I appreciate the time. I do find it interesting that we've mitigated the sewer overflow successfully, but it's still degraded. I understand there's honeysuckle and other invasive species, but I don't know that there's anything that's, you know, thistle or weed that has to be removed and mitigated, so I'm not certain that that is consistent in my mind either. I'll tell you a little story. My parcel I purchased about seven years ago, and we had an inundating rainfall that next year, and so I had a stream through my backyard with water flowing down a berm. The original plating said that there was supposed to be a drainage easement that was not functional after 20-some years after that plating, and we wound up with a pond in our backyard for several years. I dug a tile, tried to get the water mitigated, worked with our city staff to make sure we had permitting and all of that. We got the water attacked, but I could not tell that water to go to save my life. It came when it wanted to, and it left when it wanted to. I can't tell water, you need to go to a mitigation bank down in Hudson instead of down First Street or onto Lake Shore Drive. We don't know exactly what the weather's going to do. Heck, we had a very brown winter until Punxsutawney Phil told us that winter was done, and then we got covered in the white stuff. So, I don't know that we can tell water what to do. I'm in favor of preserving as much of that as possible, and I don't find consistency in the mitigation there. I think, it sounds like this is not a case of NIMBYism as much as it is doing the right density to have a flow through town. And so, us being in charge of the proper flow through town, I do think that there needs to be less density and some more effort done to preserve the wetlands that are there, shrunken or not, as the current status is. We don't know what they're going to do in two years' time, so I don't think I'm in favor of moving this further. I'd also have a curiosity why the A1 to the north wasn't attempted to be moved in that same fashion, because it's not in the wetlands anywhere. I wonder if there could be some more spread to make this a little more usability there. I drove by earlier today, and there is a massive hill of dirt coming off of Lake Shore Drive as you approach that northern A1. I don't know state code, but I think you have to keep all the dirt on site for any of these developments, so I just wonder what they're going to do with the earth moving, knowing what it does when you drive heavy traffic over existing good soil. I can't imagine that the wetlands wouldn't be impeded further. So, I have a lot of reticence about this project at this density affecting the wetlands in the capacity that it does, so. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. And if, I mean, I just wanted to clarify, when I said staff doesn't give recommendations, I meant subjective recommendations. They will give recommendations when asked, how we would, how they would interpret what is allowed by ordinance.
Fair point. Thank you.
Any other discussion from council?
Yeah.
Yep.
I can't let everybody else go. Yeah, it's a tough one. I do think it is possible to separate the zoning decision from the other decisions that have been discussed that will come down the road. You know, there have been efforts by the developer to address these concerns, and that ends if we obviously don't do the zoning, because we go back to the old master plan. I also don't like the idea of what I called, I think it was described as remnant zoning, where you have old A1 little pockets sitting throughout town, and so, I'm in favor of eliminating those as much as we can. That being said, I do share the concerns that have been voiced by most of the council As it comes to the wetlands, our code says no, with a bit of an escape clause at the bottom of the ordinance of 20-6. I'm not entirely convinced, at least by the packet or at least in my own head, that we've met whatever threshold is necessary to overcome what, generally speaking, is, don't touch the wetlands, whether it's 1.86 or .56 or whatever. So, I do think that any site plan, which would be step number three down the road, has to satisfy that, and obviously, if it doesn't affect any wetlands, then you don't have to worry about that issue. Working backwards, the second step would be the master plan, and that's the area where I think we can discuss density. I have looked at our comprehensive plan, and I don't know if I call it messy, it's just an overlap that happens a lot in the law when you're writing plans and that sort of thing, where high density starts at 10 or above and medium density is 4 to 12. It is true, however, that our comprehensive plan says that it should be in the center of that 4 to 12 range, and departure upwards should only happen with special findings, and I'm not entirely sure that those have been made or any attempt has been made to satisfy that goal or expectation of the comprehensive plan. And I would ask that any plan that comes forward, any master plan that comes forward, should be tailored more towards the center to be consistent with our comprehensive plan. I will say, the more difficult hurdle, I think, at the end of the day is going to be the wetlands, because to the extent that we allow us to chip away at it time after time after time, then the ordinance simply becomes meaningless. And so, I'm in favor of vehement protection in that regard, and I will also do some more homework on the Army Corps findings, but I just wanted to make sure where I was at. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
This is, this is a hard one. The word messy has been used a lot. I think that, you know, when we have a lot of folks show up and have a variety of concerns, I think we've tried to answer most of the questions that we can, and kind of, you know, as a general rule of thumb, we have some things that are certainly a concern. Obviously, we've discussed wetlands a lot and density, and there's certainly some safety concerns. I think we always try to address those, and, you know, if you look at our track record, say, for road safety, you'll look at the corner of First and Union where we heard loud and clear that's a problem, putting it around about. You know, we've heard from other people about different places all over town, and we try to address those concerns where we can. We've put in stop signs in North Cedars, slowed the speed limits down. I mean, I guess that's just kind of to say that it, we do try to address the concerns without the need for folks to lawyer up, and I hope that it is known that most people don't have lawyers. Most people can't afford that, and so, that's why we try to listen to folks without that need and do our best. And I understand that that was perhaps a term that you folks heard at planning and zoning, or that, you know, not everyone is going to be happy. I mean, that is a reality. Like, for example, I don't think any of us sitting up here are very happy. You know, it's hard. This is a hard decision. We've talked a lot about needing housing generally, and so, obviously, this addresses a need for housing. Is this the right spot? Is this the right type of housing? There's so many questions that come along with that. So, you know, we have read all of your emails, we've all talked to staff, we've all had lots of conversations with Mayor Lautick, asking him to ask questions. There's been a lot of back and forth. No one is taking this lightly. This isn't just a case of, oh, we think, you know, you should put an apartment here, and we don't care what you have to say. That's certainly not the case, and I hope that, hearing from everyone, you all hear that, that that's not the way we're operating up here. I share all of the same concerns as everyone else, so I think it's good that we're, you know, on the same page. I think if we do proceed with approving the rezoning, that does give us the potential to consider some other changes. I personally, if this does proceed, would like to see wetland stormwater management. I know that some of those resources have been provided to the developer by our staff. I think that, for me, if this were going to proceed, would be the way forward. I don't have a lot of concern over the density, but I hear folks, and so, I am willing certainly to consider that and see that come down a bit, so. Yeah, that's where I'm at. I hope folks feel like they've been heard and that, you know, we're not just passing the buck on to the next one, so, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, just like to thank the public for coming tonight. To Councilmember Dunn's point, I was also working today, but I think I received 12 different emails from this group in some fashion just today. So, I really appreciate the civil discourse that you folks have shown. I don't get the impression that this is a "not in my backyard" situation. In fact, I've actually heard a willingness from this group to try to find even maybe a more amenable solution that would maybe appease this neighborhood a little bit more, which I think is great. For me, with this, the wetland issue has been probably belabored at this point, but I think we all agree that anything we can do to preserve those, I think, is very, very important. And I do think that this density, I think we really need to see a lower number coming back, to be more in line with our comprehensive plan says now. We're really, we're really, we're really more in the high density at this number than we are. So, for me, I think that would be, that would be a must. The point from Mr. Hawbaker is well taken. We don't want to have small parcels in the midst of all of this that are not conforming. I understand that. But ultimately, I think, just looking at this project, I do struggle a little bit, unlike you, to maybe separate the two. So, for me, this would, this would just be a struggle to pass through as presented.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I'd like to circle back on a couple components here. It was said that we turn down the rezoning, then the developer can revert to the 1994 approved plan, but it was also said that things like the ingress egress would have to be changed, altering the plan. The wetlands with the Army Corps, nothing in there would even remotely be permissible. So, that density would have to change. I think it would then revert back to the developer bringing forward something that would fit in truly a medium density design, and then there might be an aptitude to change the zoning then on this parcel. So, right now, it's over the medium density limits as described by the high density land use categories in the comprehensive plan, so I can't get behind this as it's stated in really any way. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Again, I find myself on the rare occasion that I agree with Daryl.
Don't admit that publicly.
Yeah. It, I wanted to make sure people understood that just because it went back to 1994, that that was just going to be a done deal on that. To Daryl's point, there's things that need to be addressed, so.
Yes. Thank you, and I'll just reclarify that. It would be, have the ability to go forward to the subdivision level, and those has a master plan, but there are still areas that they would have to meet current code and ordinances that still have to be approved and reviewed. Any other discussion from council? All right, seeing none, this item requires a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That item does not pass. And again, we'll take a second, because I know everyone's really here for this item. We will take a second if everyone will likely leave. You don't need to stick around for the rest of the meeting. I just want to say thank you, everyone, for coming out and engaging in the process. I'm sure there'll be more discussion, but appreciate your input on this, and again, thank you, everyone, have a good night. We'll take a brief pause, just so everybody can get a chance to, yeah. We'll take a quick recess, yeah, restroom, good point. A quick recess, five minutes, and be back here at 28 till, or 28 after, excuse me. A quick recess, five minutes, and be back here at, um, 28 till, or 28 after, excuse me.
Which is, you got Fourth Street and you got Apollo's up there.
You're back.
All right, thank you, everyone, for readjourning the meeting. We all good? That wasn't like a call. I was just actually checking. We're all good? Okay, I think we have seven of them.
Hear ye, hear ye.
Thank you, Counselor.
I called the meeting back to order.
Session is in disorder, order, order. All right, we are now on to item number three, old business, past ordinance number 3094, amending the zoning map by removing approximately 13.28 acres of property located at the southeast corner of Green Hill and Cedar Heights from R2 Residential District and placing the same into MU Mixed Use Residential District upon its third and final consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion seconded, and any discussion on this item from council?
Just a comment that, uh, I got some information that I was questioning on the, the, uh, this area in comparison with the, uh, area below that we've been talking about on revitalization, uh, revitalization, and I got clarity on that. So, I, um, I'm good to go here.
Cool. Thank you, Counselor.
Yep.
Any other discussion from council? All right, seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number four, resolution approving and authorizing execution of a MU Mixed Use Residential Zoning District Developmental Procedures Agreement with Cedar West Apartments of Cedar Falls LLC, contingent upon approval of previous item. We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and seconded, and any discussion from council? Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number five, past ordinance number 3095, repealing ordinance number 2774, designating the College Hill Urban Revitalization Area in the city of Cedar Falls, Iowa, upon its third and final consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council? And any from the public? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number six, past ordinance number 3096, amending the zoning map by removing approximately 76.53 acres of property located at the northeast corner of US Highway 20 and Hudson Road from A1 Agricultural Zoning District to PC2 Planned Commercial District upon its second consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded, any discussion from council? And any from the public? All right, roll call vote, please. It's oddly quiet.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move to the consent calendar. So, the following items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Are any items from council? Seeing none, any from the public? All right, also seeing none, do we have a motion to approve items seven through 12 of the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Motion and seconded, and requires a voice vote. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Move on to the resolution calendar. So, the following items will be acted upon by, by a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Any requests from council?
14.
14?
Mr. Mayor, 29.
Any others from council?
Mr. Mayor, 32.
30, 32. All right, and any others? Thanks for that, because I was going to call that one, too. Any others from council? All right, any from the public? All right, so look for a motion to approve items number 13 through 33 of the resolution calendar.
So moved.
Excluding items 14, 28, 29, and 32. So moved again.
Second.
Motion seconded, and requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move to item 14, a resolution designating July 5th, 2025, 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, as an additional day for use, of use for consumer fireworks within the city limits. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion seconded and open for council discussion.
So, I can certainly appreciate the efforts, and I always do, on our public safety officers. Um, and I, I know it's a, another day of burdensome for them, but I'm pretty well been stuck with, we celebrated on the 4th, and we have a lot of citizens that are already of, of, uh, concern on, on even that. So, I'm not for adding another day.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Can someone tell me what is actually in our ordinance right now? Is this a one day, or did we have a two day already?
It's one.
You want to speak to it, Bree?
Uh, Mayor and Council, our current ordinance allows fireworks on July 4th, and then if we're going to add additional days, we have to do it before March 1st each year.
An annual...
Each, each year, we come to the council with a different request, depending where Independence Day falls on the calendar week.
Calendar, okay. And to clarify, so this year is Friday is the 4th.
Saturday is the 5th.
Recommendation from a public safety team was looking at Saturday. Obviously, the enforcement piece, um, my vote matters, but I've always been the, I always like, I grew up going to 4th of July. That was it. Kansas, that's all that was allowed. Um, I do know it is a big concern of residents. I also understand, though, that the allowance of the second day is something that's...
If I could finish.
Appreciate, oh, sorry, we, I apologize. I will let you go back to it, other than...
I just wanted to reiterate that this might be one of the, another rare occasion where I agree with Gil, or we're in unison twice in a meeting. So, I think the 4th is a one day holiday. Um, there's impassionate pleas by many people that it interferes with their daily living and, you know, enjoying their lives in Cedar Falls and so on and so forth. So, I'm for one day, so.
Sorry for interrupting you, Counselor.
No worries.
Mr. Mayor?
I certainly am not in disagreement with, uh, Councilman Schultz and Councilman Cruz. However, I do remember as we had this discussion about, uh, setting dates, uh, you know, because as you all may recall, for a long time since the state legalized the use of fireworks, the city did not, when that was first done, the city did not allow for fireworks in, in town. And, I mean, in a perfect world, I'd go back to where they're just not even legal. Uh, you know, that'd be my perfect world. But now that we've been given this, uh, law from the state, including requiring us to allow people to sell the, the fireworks in our town, I recall the conversation, and the reason I got behind it was because not only our, our public safety, but our, our friends from our neighboring community, uh, we had a conversation about if you allow a window, it actually helps in the long run as far as compliance. So, uh, and I, and I do, and trust me, I hear you. The, the past couple of years, depending on the dates, I mean, it does get to be a lot. So, I don't want citizens or my fellow council folks to think I don't understand what you're saying. But I do believe, if I recall correctly, because even when we didn't have any legal fireworks in town, people still used them. I feel like now, we have the, the window, it's, it's a little bit chaotic for a day or two, or however many we allow, which I think it's up to three, actually. But then I do feel like people shut it down. And I, I think in my thought, thinking, that is, and it's not only, um, better for our, our citizens, even though many of us don't want to maybe hear them at all, and, and the safety is a concern, but it's also, I believe, from past conversations, uh, easier on our public safety, uh, folks to enforce it. Um, so, anyway, uh, it's not that I don't agree with Councilman Cruz and Councilman Schultz, but I, I'm recalling that from the conversations of years past.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
If I may, I agree with everything except for the first and last thing that Councilmember Dunn said. I agree that, uh, we gained compliance by adding in a Saturday in particular, and I trust our police chief and director of public safety, their recommendation was not made flippantly. Uh, we do have by ordinance the ability to set any additional days of use within that state allowed window. Um, and to that end, it's interesting, the Senate study bill did pass subcommittee from Senator Sires, one of our local representatives, to allow firework usage in the state allowed window and to disallow local counties or city councils from prohibiting firework usage. That most likely won't pass the Senate file that's out there now, but that is a proposal from their level. So, I think allowing for one day of usage gives that opportunity to gain compliance. Like Councilmember Dunn said, um, yes, it is a little hectic, but I do think people cut it off at the allowed window, uh, years ago now, when Mayor Green had promoted this idea as a rain date backup to the initial 4th of July. We didn't want to have people sitting there with what he called unspent ordinance in their basements for an entire year, waiting on next year's 4th of July. So, this gives an opportunity just in case, um, and allows people to light them off and enjoy celebrating that weekend only. And I think we, we have set a precedent now by allowing that Saturday. We've moved a couple of days after the 4th to be able to incorporate the Saturday, which is the noted compliance gain, is that people are off work on Saturdays. They're not as disrupted. My family still gets up early and goes Sunday morning to church, but most people enjoy setting off on a weekend. This doesn't interrupt as much workday sleep time, uh, for those that are in that boat. So, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Dunn that we keep compliance by allowing this Saturday window.
Thank you, Counselor. And just point of information, Waterloo does also have this on their agenda tonight, proposing the same additional one day of Friday the 5th. So, that was something we coordinated with them on to make sure we were at least proposing the same thing. Any other discussion from council? All right, seeing none, requires a, oh, excuse me, any discussion from the public? Staff members, thank you for...
I've noticed the last couple years, a lot less noise by allowing it. Because here I was here, they're putting it on a couple times. I believe somebody just put it in my backyard.
Forgot to tell us where you lived, Doreen.
Look into it.
And we'll keep an eye out for Daryl for you.
220 Clay Street.
All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
Five voting aye, two voting nay. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That motion carries. Uh, move to item number 28, resolution of necessity proposing the West 23rd Street Reconstruction Project and setting date of hearing thereon, uh, suggested hearing date of March 17th, 2025, contingent upon approval. So, we had the approval of the previous item already, um, so.
Second.
Who motioned?
So moved.
I thought I heard it first. Second now.
All right, and now whoever polled it?
Yeah, I think we polled the wrong, we had 29 mentioned by Gil, but I didn't have anybody marked for 28.
Oh, okay, we will need to vote on, actually, I may have. Sorry, I had a...
No, I didn't pull 29.
Oh, sorry, Chris.
Chris did.
Doesn't matter, nobody pulled 28, but we're...
Okay, well, any discussion on item 28 for this evening?
Well, I had 28 circled. Why did I have 28 circled?
Because he mentioned it when...
Probably because I said it.
Okay.
I'll take, I'll take accountability for this one. I think I may have had a mark on it.
These papers are for that. Kim said at the beginning, yeah.
That's why. I did have that mark on there. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight for my... So, any discussion from council on this item?
28?
Besides my ineptitude?
No.
Nope.
We're going to have a committee as a whole for that one.
You'll need a long committee meeting.
Did you need a second here?
Any discussion from the public? All right, seeing none, roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number 29, uh, resolution receiving a filing and setting March 3rd, 2025, as the date of public hearing on the proposed plan specifications form of contract and estimate of cost for the 2025 CDBG sidewalk infill project. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion seconded, and...
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I asked for this to be polled, uh, other than just to mention, I've received a lot of emails from, um, individuals surrounding this particular topic, which is interesting. But, uh, just to be said that there is a public hearing on this. I've received emails. I've been in correspondence with several citizens about this, but if they want to come speak publicly on this, this is their opportunity. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yep. I'm assuming it might be in the southern part of town? That's why you're getting many of the comments?
Uh, it's...
Area of town we're working on this year?
Colorado and Dallas.
Yeah, which is, uh, just east of Paw Park.
Yep. And then this is the sidewalk infill, kind of based on the Safe Routes to School project. Each year, staff looks at what we have for available CDBG funds, tries to prioritize which areas, based on LMI qualifications and other details, would be the best place to try and put in some new sidewalk. Um, and then that goes through the public hearing process, and then...
This is just setting the date, right?
This is just setting the date.
Yes. All right, so...
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion from council? And any from the public? All right, seeing none, requires a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Move to item number 32, resolution setting March 3rd, 2025, as the date of public, second public hearing on a proposed multi-residential urban revitalization plan for a proposed urban revitalization area.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion seconded, and Kelly, I can jump in. I meant to pull the two and...
I love that.
Give some thoughts on it.
I just want to make sure I, yeah.
Yep. Um, so for this item, I am looking for some feedback, um, for moving forward with, we are just discussing setting the date, but along with that is the specifics of the public hearing and what to bring forward. So, based on this, just a reminder, this is the conversation about the incentive district for urban revitalization. Uh, so, working it through with Attorney Rogers, uh, with staff, we can come forward to that meeting, uh, with the recommendation for the rezoning at the public, public, second public hearing as it was already designed, um, that we were on the third reading of. We would have been tonight, but with the petition we've received for this public hearing, we decided to hold that till we have the second public hearing. It seemed a little disingenuous to approve the third if we were still going to open up a public hearing. So, at that meeting, we can bring back both the plan as it was, and we do have the option, if this group would like, we can also bring the amended version that does remove the southern portion, at least so that there is discussion on that. You guys can vote at that meeting to suspend the rules and approve the option, um, in a single reading. One point of information, though, is as this is a second, second public hearing, again, working with Attorney Rogers, we think it would be more prudent just to really follow the leather of the law that for that third reading, this does set a new public hearing date, which amends some date information in the ordinance. So, we would want to revert back to, we need to go back through the three public readings. to go back through the three public readings on even keeping the item as it is. So essentially, at this point, we're not really discussing the items tonight. My recommendation, to make sure we have the ability to make a decision and be able to move things forward at the next meeting, would be for us as staff to bring back both options, so that way, depending on the conversation of where that goes, we have both options available to us, so that the group can decide which best way to move forward.
So, Mr. Mayor, you're saying this sets the date, March 3rd?
Yes, yep.
It doesn't say in here?
Yeah, March 3rd, which would be the next...
Okay.
council meeting.
And that at that meeting, we basically are going to hear from the public, and then we can decide to remove or not remove the southern portion, and at the same time, approve all three readings?
So we would have it available, that this group can decide to move forward, either with it as it was, or with an amended version.
The legal documents will be prepared in the packet to choose A or B, or something like that?
Correct.
Okay.
And then just as a reminder, would require supermajority vote to agree to suspend the rules, so that will be part of the discussion was, 5 of 7 will need to agree to suspend the rules for whatever item.
So this will be a two-step discussion?
Mr. Mayor, the way we envisioned it, be resolution A or resolution B, they'll be ready with the proper legal descriptions, either way, followed by later in the agenda, ordinance A or ordinance B, depending upon what council does with the resolutions. Just to keep it moving, unfortunately, in either case, it's the first reading of the ordinance. And so council could then, six of you could vote to suspend the rules and go ahead and pass either ordinance A or ordinance B that night, March 3rd.
So then, we don't have to go back to planning zoning, from what you described? Okay.
No more notice.
No, okay, so, we're setting the date, so there'll be a public comment, and then the next item on the agenda will be an A and a B?
So it'll kind of be, so if you go to the first page of the agenda, the public hearing, it'll be put in there as a public hearing, so we'll go through the public hearing process, we'll receive and file proof of publication of the notice of that hearing, we'll have the written communications, staff comments, any public comments, and then at the next part, we will have...
Oh, and a special order of business, you said?
Yep, so then we will have either option A or B that the group can vote to move forward with.
I vote twice.
Not legal. So any feedback or discussion on that? Otherwise, I'll take it as a motion to approve with that direction, to bring back the ordinance with both, the second hearing with both those options.
That's fine.
Okay, any for discussion from council? None, any from the public? All seeing none, roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Now moved to bills and claims, we have a motion to allow bills and claims for February 17th.
So moved.
Second. Did someone call out 33, or did I, okay, all right, then I just had it circled, maybe I thought I was going to.
That one I did not do.
Yes.
We have a motion second for bills and claims, any discussion from council?
Pay some people.
Seeing none, any from the public? Also seeing none, records a roll call vote, please.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, any council updates or announcements? All right, seeing none, council referrals, so we have item number 35, referral to review the criteria of the RP planned residence district, which is section 26-179 of the Cedar Falls Code of Ordinances. Do we just have a, it's been submitted, do we have a second to discuss it?
Second.
Thank you, Gil. Some quick, Daryl, I can kind of let you jump in with what your thoughts were, just...
I'll just say that I'll refer to the first two and a half hours of the council meeting as my debate.
Done. Cut it off there.
Okay.
So, based on all the discussions, I had to have internally with staff to even try and make sure we had a handle on this whole thing. I did ask them kind of their thoughts on, okay, is this something we do need to review? Is this something that if we look at putting a pause on these projects, would cause any problem? And I think, it's my opinion, working with staff, that there'd be no problem, I think, right now, giving the direction to not move forward with any new RP districts, and then include this discussion as part of the plan to review our overall zoning ordinances, and...
Well, if I may comment on that?
Yeah.
You done?
Yeah.
Okay. Given what might be in the hopper, I would like to zero in on the conflict that was pointed out by Mr. Vajpayee, and show some clarity to the public developers of the future, the high-density criteria in excess of 10 units, yeah, units, and then medium density, four to 12. It's an obvious conflict, and fix it. That's pretty simplistic. Then, I would also like to touch on...
This wasn't in your referral?
Yeah, it was. The, it's in the RP, right here, 179. The density requirements computed on the total area basis, private streets, drives, and so on. I have a hard time including retention ponds with all the toxicity and crud that'll be in those, in usable land, in computing how many people should live on a parcel. So, those two components could have some clarity there, and I'd say let's do it sooner, because when are we going to talk about the, what do you call it, rewriting the code?
We don't have a for-sure timeline, but looking at, because one thing I will say is, right now, the priority we've been working on is getting the timeline and the structure for the Development Task Force, and doing any of these means we are pausing that and not doing the Development Task Force till, well, just from a staff load standpoint, we are full on, and I'm not pushing, but I think this is a conversation we need to have, I just, I do think, and I'll circle this back quick, is, I think, I heard kind of two requests, one is the RP specific, and then one is kind of, I think, getting us all on the same page of our interpretation, and I think two from what staff's giving out about what medium density really means and how that's worded.
Well, it's still definitional under RP 26-179, because they refer to density, but there's no number.
Yeah, because that, I think, is referring back to our definition within the comprehensive plan, the medium, so we would have to review the comprehensive plan.
Well, that's part of it. If we throw on a sentence to say, referencing page 147, high density is over 10 and medium is four to 10.
So I think, quick, I'm just, I think, I would recommend we kind of treat these as two separate discussions, quick. One is just the reviewing of the RP district, and then separately would be the, if we want to review just our overall definition of medium density and how we're applying that.
That's kind of one of the same. Over 10 or four to 10?
Can I provide some clarity, maybe? Play a little bit?
Go ahead.
So the RP district can be applied to any area of the city, and so it would be considered a rezoning. That area could be in the comp plan shown as low density, it could be shown in the comp plan as high density, it could be shown in the plan as medium density residential. So every RP district zoning that comes forward would be considered then, based on what the comp plan says. The RP district zoning, the actual stuff that's in the code, gives a big range of density allowance, but it's limited then by the master plant that's approved by the council. So, it isn't, it allows up to R4 density, high-density residential, which you could approve, but it also allows low density. So we have an awful lot of RP districts in the city that are just single-family neighborhoods. And then we have some that are multifamily and some that are mixed, so it really comes down to, it's a plan development that has to be approved by the council. So, and it's based on the comp plan when you're considering the rezoning, so the comp plan is separate from what's allowed with the zoning itself.
Thank you.
Is that clear as mud?
Clear as mud, that's why I'm doing my referral.
Yep, so quick, you have a thought?
Mr. Mayor, I am certainly on board with Councilman Cruz's recommendation. I do agree, though, like, I don't want to just, and I understand what he's saying for the timeliness, I also hear you loud and clear.
Yeah.
I would like to, I agree with the mayor, that I would like this to be added to the overall comprehensive zoning look that we had consensus on at goal-setting, because I feel like in the end, that would do a better, more efficient job of hopefully fixing any confusion or, you know, concerns we have.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think the comp plan review, correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, is 28 or 29, maybe, fiscal year that we're planning the comp review?
I think I'm talking about the code, or the zoning that we talked about at...
The developer code.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, but that's all dictated by the land use map that's in the comp plan from 2012. So we're going to review the comp plan in total, which is, the overriding factor is the land use map for the density that he's talking about, right? And that is slated for 29 or 28?
Hold on, I have it in front of me, I'm looking, I'll find it. Do you know what number it is?
No. I just remember a slide from goal-setting last year, where we talked about the strategic plan and then the comp plan. So I think that piece of it, the, I mean, if we can amend page 147, that's one thing, but...
Yep, because I will say, I do agree with, just using tonight's first item as a discussion of, I would like to make sure we're able to be on the same page between this body and staff of what do we consider with the wording of that medium density, and how it says four to 12 should be in the middle, what that really means for the direction we're giving to staff for how to interpret that, based on what we think should come forward on that. So that is something...
Well, yeah, I mean, a developer's not going to spend millions of dollars on whatever acreage of land and then say, oh, I'm only going to put four. You know, they're going to put as many as they can squeeze in there, and then more. They're going to give them an inch, they want a mile, so on.
Mr. Mayor, am I correct in that you said we could pause RP for now, and so then we could work with staff to find the timeline for when we could address these items, when it makes sense, and then we could unpause or...
I'm for that. I mean, some people use the word moratorium, but that gets everybody excited.
You said it, Daryl.
Pause.
The word that starts with M and as a...
I don't know if there's a legal definition around pause, so...
Mr. Mayor, I was a little hurried, I'm sorry, I don't mean it, I didn't, I just hear we have RP all over.
Yeah.
So are we essentially shutting down any...
I think we would just be saying, if anyone knew, if anyone brought a new RP project forward, we would say we're not.
I think, and sadly, that's what we do with every public hearing on those areas, anyway. So other than setting a committee, which would give us the opportunity to give this body a direction to give staff, which I don't think would have to supplant all the other work we're doing for code revisions.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, how far down the road is the schedule for the next opening to put this in? July, August?
September?
So, do you have an idea?
I don't know that I can answer that straight, it really depends on the progress of current plans that we're trying to get through approval, and how long those take to open up capacity to deal with other referrals.
So, it could be July of '26.
The zoning code review and rewrite was, I think, in fiscal '27, to be, planned to be after completing the College Hill zoning, and then opening up the capacity, start working on the city as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
Well, this is a particular component of the big picture. We saw the conflict in front of us, quite clearly, messy, so, I don't know, is it worth fixing this component before we delve into the entirety?
My personal opinion is no, because it seems like if we put a pause on the new ones, it kind of...
Mr. Rogers, what is the definition, legal term of pause in municipal law?
Staff understands council's wishes, that if a rezoning to RP comes forward, council's not going to look favorably upon it.
Because the way I would interpret is, staff cannot tell the developer, no, you can't apply for it.
Can't tell the developer that.
Yeah, but they can give the direction to the developer, hey, council has given direction that they are not supportive of these projects coming forward.
The RP zoning district with master plant is not a favored tool for development from council right now.
You could refer to the recording from two, yeah.
Which, just the point of order, then I think the referral could be for discussion without recommendation, to say more specifically, what is the preference of this council in regards to medium density and high density, so that we don't put an effective moratorium on those developments. We don't want to not look favorably on development, we just want to make sure that we understand. It would be clarifying what's in the comp plan, if we came to a consensus on that at a future commuter meeting, what we're talking about now is whether to have that committee meeting.
I'm in favor of just, of the idea that, you know, what, it's not favored is good enough, and I think if we try to get any further down the road about trying to determine density or giving messages about density, that gets pretty convoluted, and I, let's just, we're just saying, it's not favored, you know, and so developers would know that going forward, and then we can solve this problem when we do rewrites down the road, okay?
Plus, I would add that comp plan changes start with P and Z, so there's that step.
Right.
And I could say, I will, just from my end, I'll probably, in my one-on-ones with everyone, follow up just on your thoughts on the whole medium density, but then try to work with staff on making sure we are clear on how we're interpreting that definition of medium density and the four to 12.
So then, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, where does that leave the inclusion of a retention pond, and that in the area, you said it was a separate discussion, which it is, I suppose?
Oh, you mean on the density calculation?
Yeah.
I would say, since we're pausing, that...
Okay, well, I want that, I don't want that to be left behind.
There may not be RP's anymore when this is done.
There you go.
So, we...
True.
Well, in any of the zones, districts, zoning districts, do we count a toxic retention pond in usable calculations? We do, but should we? Doesn't make sense to me.
Now, I'll just say, for the point of order, tonight's referral, because I think that gets into a whole separate topic, we can still talk about it, just not for tonight's referral, but how we're calculating the density is what we want to look at?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I will take that if there's consensus as kind of giving staff direction that RP is not a preferred zoning right now, and that we will look to include that in the zoning review, and we'll figure out the timeline for that.
Sounds good.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number 36, referral to review the development review and approval process of the downtown character district. So we've got it submitted as first, is there a second to discuss?
A second.
Second to discuss?
Mr. Mayor, this came about in my mind, it brought back the discussion we had when we were talking about the form-based zoning in the character districts for downtown, downtown, and I think there is a desire from many people, public in particular, to have transparency of the projects coming forward, they want to see what's going to be developed next to them, and it's been said that we have this checklist, and I looked back, I don't know, I pulled something from 2018 or so, the checklist that I saw in this particular project was building setbacks, density, parking, open green space, landscaping, building design, roof pitch, and so on. So that's a checklist of items, like a tech review, is the term used, to decide if a project is viable coming forward, then I see no harm, and I think we'll get a better product to be built if we have planning and zoning review and council review, because we saw a developer put a fair bit of time and effort into something, and it got denied. And there was, you know, reasons that we saw. So I think the idea of having a, what's it called, zoning review board should be, it should be disbanded or removed from the code, and have, in the character districts, the regular standard process of planning and zoning review and council, that's what I'm stating.
Okay, open up the council discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think it was a piece of the downtown character district that was moved by the previous bodies before I even got on, to try and make that an amendment, that they would, plans would still come before planning and zoning, and then before council for approval, but in the downtown character district, those don't happen. Ex-Mayor Brown at that time had said, the opportunity for public input was then, when the ordinance changed, and this is before I even ran for council, I mean, I was, while I was running for council, that the amendment failed to remove that, I believe it's Staff Technical Review Committee, that might not be the proper verbiage on it, but essentially, I agree that though it would take a two-week to four-week delay for those projects, the public does expect that, and the character district downtown is the only place where they don't have that right now, so when a new item comes before... So when a new item comes before staff, it can be built, or at least the ground can be broken before they find out it's happening. We're going to use that as an example for how we want to do other areas, at least that was the sentiment in the past couple of years. So I think making that concession to say, "Let's bring it back before P and Z and council," gives us that opportunity to gain more public input on that. And I'm not at all trying to put anybody on the spot, but when that was discussed at a previous meeting within the last month, the look of, "Wait a minute, that doesn't come before us?" In the character district, it doesn't come before P and Z and council. It's just a done deal by that checklist. So when we turned down the zoning change on First Street, that four-story building would have been built without the public and without us, and we turned it down, because it wasn't a good fit for the neighborhood. We would never see that with this review committee.
Well, I guess the question is, do we want to talk about it some more? So, I don't want to take a lot of staff time, sort of initially, you know, as far as putting it together, if we're going to talk about it some more. And one of the benefits is that, you know, I'll remind Mr. Cruz and Mr. Gainfield that, you know, when I hear developers don't like us, and yet when we have a process that's streamlined, and, you know, we can kind of avoid these last-minute vetoes, as long as it's consistent with the code that was voted for. I mean, that's why it's in place, so I don't have a problem reviewing it, but I'm just letting you know.
Mr. Mayor, one sec, okay. Okay, anything else, counselor?
No.
Okay. One sec, before we come back to the other...
I guess I'd like to...
One sec, I was going to make, see if anybody else had, that hadn't spoken yet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I don't want to talk about this.
Thank you, counselor.
I think, Mr. Mayor, sorry, the one thing, and just, when we say there's not, you know, staff's doing what the direction the council gave, I just, when we say there's no transparency, I think sometimes, and I understand what you're saying, but that's, if folks are sitting at home, that seems like something, you know, wrong is being done, and it's not true. Like it or agree with it or not, the council of the past did put this in place, and the checklist, obviously, it met the checklist that council agreed upon. And to remind everybody, that was not just the council's work, that was, like, months and actually probably more like a year of citizen and planning and zoning time to come up with that list. So I just want to, you know, make sure it wasn't just something willy-nilly was, came up with.
Same, counselor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I fail to see that the current process in the character districts is different than the current checklist we'd have anywhere else in the city on items that need to go in front of planning and zoning. The difference here in the character areas is that there is no review of the intangibles, things that the public will know is a problem based on this last example of the traffic pattern on Olive and Franklin, was it, I believe, or whatever the street was? And problems with that, that unless the staff that's designing this and going through this checklist lives in that area, has talked to the people around that area to do the research to know, they won't know that they're approving something that's going to be a problem. That's why you have transparency, because you're building things that will probably be there for 100 years, or north of 60, 70 years. It gives us a better community, in my mind, to review, and if our checklist and the criteria of each of the components of the checklist are accurate and reliable, like we just saw the problems with the RP, we'll have a good product. If something is brought up by a couple of the neighbors to say, "Oh, we have this and this," you know, some drainage or something, or, you know, that isn't captured in the checklist, we want to know it.
Mr. Mayor, are we voting on whether or not we're going to, we want to do the referral?
And that's, to clarify, we're looking for a little direction on, the referral would be, are we looking for staff to put information together to come back on this for a committee discussion? And I don't know if you want to, since it was your item, if you want to clarify, are you asking for a committee discussion on...
Yeah, I mean, what would be the process to take out the zoning review board decision and reinstate the Euclidean zoning process, if that's the right terminology?
So I'd probably guess the next, if the group wanted to do that, I would probably recommend the next step would be direction to staff, for us to have a committee discussion on the district, and trying to get direction then on what actual changes to the zoning, because that, that'll go through the full P and Z process. That, so I would probably look for a consensus then, do we want staff to put that information together for us to plan on a committee discussion, to look at giving direction toward making or putting changes to the character district zoning through the change process?
Would this be referring it to P and Z to draft, to review that language as drafted by staff? Is that what you're referring this towards?
I'm referring it to a committee discussion with an us, so we'd probably bring it back to a committee discussion to discuss what direction are we actually giving to P and Z to review for changes, or what direction are we giving to staff to draft as changes to propose to P and Z?
I guess what I'm, I guess I'm asking for staff understanding here, if we're making it as succinct as refer it to staff to draft language to revert back to planning and zoning and council's subsequent approval for projects in the character district downtown. That's succinct enough in my mind, if that is what the council pushes forward, would that be enough direction to not have to wait until a July committee meeting? It's not that complex to remove this one piece and revert it back to how the rest of town is. Is that clear enough, if that's the preference of council, or no?
So why don't we discuss a more detailed referral at the next meeting? Because this is, please, let's have the staff look at the process. If the idea is that we want to have some ability to have a public hearing and council or P and Z intervention, then whoever wants to bring forward the referral, grab the language, you know, close to it, what's in the code for those processes, and tell us what you want.
That's, I'm not trying to cut you off, sir. That is what the referral says, is to submit a referral to reinstate transparency of projects coming forward in the downtown character district to include planning and zoning review as well as council approval. That's the change in ordinance that he's seeking.
Agreeing from more fully, the drafted...
Oh, I've just looked at the line from there.
Yeah, it's not, I guess that's not the exact verbiage of the referral, but that is the text of the referral. So is that text enough for staff to know what to do if this body said, "Yes, we want that?" Is what I'm curious about. Is that...
One little tidbit I was going to throw in there, I was trying to find, to Aaron's point, some language, and I was Googling or searching through our code for zoning review board, zoning review committee, and I couldn't find anything to even grab onto to say, who are the appointed people on this zoning review board?
So all that, the zoning review committee, is just the staff that's reviewing it. It's a staff put together of the building official, the zoning administrator, and another planner, and the idea behind it is it's a brand-new code. We want to have a smaller committee that could help people that wanted to do projects in the area to come forward with their pre-applications, to talk about the code, so we could, it's basically a committee of staff to help people understand the code. So it's not, so it goes through the same tech review process, and there's lots of zones that don't, the site plans don't come to council. The R1, the R2, the R3, the C2, the C1, I mean, all those zones don't require site plan approval by P and Z and council. So it's similar in a lot of ways to those other zones.
I think if I can clarify, just to your question a little bit, do you know, is that written in the ordinance, like, that line that says, "Here's how the zoning review board reviews the..."
It's, yeah, it names what, who's on the committee, and what the role of the committee is, is basically to help, it's, every project that comes to the city, the staff is helping people understand the codes.
Understand, yeah.
And that's, that's basically the role of that committee.
Do you know where it's written down, that, is that in an ordinance somewhere, or is that...
Right, it's right in the ordinance.
So it's in the ordinances?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in the site plan review process, also, that section of the code as well. All the site plans are reviewed in general.
Could you maybe pull the specific lines, not tonight, but look at what those are and send it?
Sure, absolutely.
I just wanted to comment on Karen's comment that R1, R2, R3, and R4 are not reviewed by planning and zoning. You're building a house, and you have a subdivision developed, and these are the lots, and water and sewer and everything, so you wouldn't have to go to planning and zoning every single time. So that's not really relief, saying, "Oh, but it's commercial one and commercial two?" I would certainly think we'd want to have some planning and zoning review on that. That kind of surprises me, that that's not done. So, it's not easy to find, and yes, I know, and, Mr. Mayor, we've had discussions with people who have been frustrated with our developing process, and have come into planning, staff, for a preliminary review, and they kind of self-describe it as butting heads and trying to figure out, and they got to pay a lot of money, and they get turned down, and it's not a...
Mr. Mayor?
I don't think...
Can you call a question? I don't know what we're voting on.
Hold on, you can't call the question, interrupting him, I didn't allow him to finish speak, but...
I'm just trying to explain, I'm just trying to explain this simplistic referral here that, to Aaron's point, it's like, let's set a time to talk about it. Dustin's remark is that it's pretty straightforward. Does staff believe it's straightforward enough to know what to do?
So I would say, if I can, just for the sake of moving this forward, I'm just going to look for a consensus on, does anybody want to move forward with this discussion in any way with our time or staff's time? If it's yes, we'll define the specific action that is. If it's no, we'll move on from the item. So a quick consensus, show of hands, who's in support of trying to further flesh this out and give direction on the next step with it?
I think we have it.
Show of hands in support?
And, yeah, I guess I'm trying to get a point of order in my own head. I think a call to question is appropriate interruption and non-debatable.
Oh, is it? Can you interrupt?
You can interrupt a member speaking, but as soon as they're finished, then, and if there's a second, then it's no debate, two-thirds vote.
Second, sorry.
Thanks for checking though. So all those in favor of continuing the discussion to try and...
Point of order, it'd be, to call the question would be cease discussion and move to vote on the referral.
That's what I'm trying to do right now.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say, what the vote is. It would be to, because I don't think we were clear on what the actual referral...
The motion on the table is to call the question. We have to vote on that, and it has to be a super...
Oh, you mean just to call if we're going to, okay. So, motion to, in second, to call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. So then we will look for, is there a show of hands in support of moving forward with the discussion? And if this is in support, then we will flesh out what that specific referral is.
Just to send the referral.
Just to send the referral. All those in favor?
Aye.
And all opposed?
Nay.
That motion does not carry, so otherwise I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thanks, everyone.